At six o'clock, I'd like to start the meeting. The first thing we're gonna start with is community input. We bring community input.
I have something.
Okay.
I'd like to see the front door and the walls painted and the surrounding wall. It just takes away from all the nice work that was done.
And the other thing that's brought up in the previous meeting, and this will add to the minutes, is also getting the state flagged for the building.
Yes.
For this one, right? Yeah, do you want to add that to the minutes? I'm sure we'll get them.
I did make a note of that. I thought.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I thought Caroline asked Johnny to.
Oh, I'm already, okay.
I'll remind him, though.
All right, so there's anything, anybody?
Oh, nobody online.
Okay, so consent minutes, consent of the calendar, approval of the minutes for the 13th and 14th first?
Um, there's actually, we need to approve minutes for the 8th, the 9th, and the 20th as well.
All right, so I'm okay with the minutes. I don't know if you agree, but I'm okay with the minutes for the 13th, 14th, and 20th. I still gotta look at the minutes, because I had a question about them.
Okay.
All right.
I kept six.
Oh, I did? Okay, perfect. So I'm okay with the minutes for the 9th, 10th, 13th, 14th, and 20th. Are you okay with those?
Um, September 8th, 9th, 20th.
Sorry, I'm gonna get that written down.
In addition to the 13th and the 14th. I think I, I thought, did I comment?
You did.
On one, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we took care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so next up is, and I'm gonna let you talk about it. I know with COVID, it's been pretty low in strapping coming and the state of New Hampshire, state of New Hampshire guidelines, so proposal of change of the mask mandate, you wanna add to that?
So, no, I actually have heard from other people, too, that people are kinda optionally wearing masks in the building. So I wanted to propose that we consider changing the mask mandate to be optional for those who are fully vaccinated.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
I'll make the motion, actually.
Yeah, I will second that.
Okay, we got the discussion?
Is there any discussion?
No discussion. I mean, I think if we wanted to ask for public input on that, concerns from residents coming into the building potentially, we could hear that if we wanted.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just saying where I, where I've seen wherever I go, you know, the going planet fitness, for instance, there's no mask mandate there except for, it says, you know, vaccinated people, so.
And I think Jimmy Karns actually shared some information about Rochester's policy.
Right.
And they do have a policy. The only thing I think they have different is they ask for people to show their cards.
If you're, if you're.
If you're, right, exactly, if you're an employee and you are not wearing a mask.
Yep.
So I, I think probably there's a variation of policy out there.
But right now, we're proving, right now, with the approval, approval for NASA optional, I mean NASA not optional, NASA, NASA optional for vaccinated people.
That's, that's the motion.
Yeah, and I would second that. So, you all in favor, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. I feel my time. So the other thing I'm just gonna say, and with the removal of drug instructions, restrictions, what I see and what I've read, the whole state, definitely just the area of the state, but the whole state is pretty much out of drug conditions.
Yes.
So I can't see of any reason to have any restriction going, going forward.
And actually, Caroline suggested that we address this before she left.
Okay.
She suggested that we remove it, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yep, I'm, I'll make, I'll make a motion to remove any drug restrictions. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dan, you're, you're on, you're next up.
Okay. All right, so just a little background. So CNJ Trailways, they lease five buses from the state. And in years past, they've registered the buses. These are apportion plates, meaning that the buses travel from state to state. So then the portion plate is, is for that. So apportion plates, you begin the registration in the town or city, and then you have to finish it in Concord, you know? So it's always that way with apportion plates. The problem with their registrations for these five buses was that there's no mention of CNJ anywhere on the registration, so no, it doesn't say any ownership, or didn't, I should say. So anyway, I went to the DMV and we got that straightened out. Now, Jalbert leasing is mentioned, like, written right there as an additional owner on the registrations. So we're, we're good to go at the DMV. We can, you know, register the buses here. In years past, I've been told, I haven't found it anywhere in any written record, that the town has waived the fees, the municipal fees, for these five buses. And I think since there's a new board, this is something that you, you should discuss and decide upon. We can't really go on just what somebody told us happened years ago. Because there's, I don't know of any record of ever being decided that we're waiving these fees.
There's no history?
Not that I have found anywhere. So it's really just more like, you know, word of mouth, you know, that it's been going on. So, you know, it's, I think it's, you know, it's something that deserves a discussion with the board, whether or not you wanna keep going with this policy of waiving the fees for the CNJ Trailways, or just for these five buses, or, or not.
Okay. So I did have the opportunity to speak to the last town clerk and confirm that for the state buses, that they have been waiving the fees for years. So I don't know that's necessarily, necessarily foreign to us. I think it's just a matter of who made that decision, and should we continue, right?
Exactly. I'm just, you know, I think it's, I can't find a record of anyone actually, you know, putting that in writing and making a decision. I think maybe it's appropriate to revisit it and just say, okay, you know, yea or nay, and, you know, we have this policy. That probably would be a good, good idea, you know? At least in the minutes, you know? So we can.
Has it moved forward with CNJ at all?
I'm sorry?
Is he, CNJ is still in over for these five buses, then, right?
We haven't done anything with them. I, I, you know, but, you know, as soon as I get the word that, you know, we're okay with waiving the fees or not, I can go right ahead, you know? It's not gonna take.
See, I mean, I'm okay with waiving the fees, but I guess it was my understanding that we weren't necessarily waiving the fees, since they were, like, leased by the state, and it's a federal program. Either the federal government, I, I believe that the federal government would be paying because it's a lease home job of transportation for those five buses.
Right, right.
State or the federal government technically owns.
I mean, with the apportion plates, you know, like I said, they'd be starting the registration here, and then they would be finishing it with the state. So whatever they own to the state, that would happen there. But munis, you know, anything like the municipal fees, just, you know, whatever a town or city collects.
Okay.
So that, just that specific part of it is what has been waived. You know, we have no say over whether the state's gonna collect money for them, from them or not on this. Apparently, it's a program, according to Jim Jalbert from CNJ, that this is like the, I think, the second to last year of this program. So this, this might be, you know, this year and then next year, and then that's it with this, with this lease program they have, so.
Is there any documentation on this lease program?
That's something, you know, I think CNJ would have to provide. They're okay, like, I, I talked with the DMV about it. I talked with the Assistant Bureau Chief of, Assistant Chief of the Registration Bureau, and she was comfortable, they had provided her with documentation about the lease program with the state. And apparently, there's only like two bus companies in the whole state that do this still. At one point, there were five of them. Now it's, you know, dwindled down to two. And like I said, I think it's like kinda at the tail end of this program, you know? So they're, they're totally clear with the state. It's just coming down to the town, whether we wanna give them the green light and do what, you know, we have been doing, you know? That hasn't been necessarily documented, but, you know, word of mouth, anyway.
What, do you know what the other program is that does this?
Oh, I think it's called Boston Express out of Lunenary, I think. I think that's what I was told by, by Jim Jalbert, yeah.
And they have the same policy?
I do not know that. I'm not sure, not sure.
How much money are we talking about?
Uh, each bus is around a little over $3,000 per bus, and there are five buses. So somewhere between $15,000 and $16,000, we're talking about.
To the town?
Somebody, did you have a comment?
No, I, I just wanted to clarify.
To the town, yeah. Those, that would be the municipal fees for each bus would be, I think, a little over $3,000 per bus, the municipal fee.
See, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to settle and just, you know, make a decision tonight.
I'd say if we do that, we should make a policy, you know? So going forward, it won't be addressed year over year. So we would add it to our policy.
Agreed, but I'm just, I still don't, I guess I still don't understand the $15,000, $16,000 waived. Is that revenue every year that was just waived?
Sounds like it.
Sounds like it.
And accepted and no policy, right? It is a one line. What's that? It is a one line, so.
You know what, maybe we need to do a little research and, you know, talk to Lunenary and see how they handle it. And that doesn't necessarily mean we have to do that, but.
Well, and also probably, I guess, whatever the federal, the federal program is that he goes to.
So I think it's a state, it's a state program.
A state program.
Yeah.
What's the timeline for Reg Strangley's state?
Their, the, the registrations expire at the end of October.
All right.
But I was told that with the state, they like to, they like to get them in early, you know? So it seemed to me that there was some degree of urgency, you know? But still, they, they don't expire until the end of October.
So we don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight?
No. No. There's just some, some, some piece of the puzzle doesn't seem to be connected here. I mean, I'm sure it was all the up and up and how we did it, but I think there would be some kind of paperwork. There's no paperwork, no paperwork for the last, whatever, one of the years is we've done.
I have not found anything that, you know, I was, I believe the program started in the early 2000s, so maybe, you know, dug a little further back, there might be some documentation. I just, I haven't come across it, you know, my purusing's.
And just out of curiosity, was the previous town clerk, he would provide you any information about how it was, like, done?
Uh, no, just that the fees were waived.
I don't think there would be any problem with our current program for me to waive the, like, the logistics of it, right? I'm not worried about that at all.
Yep.
On my end, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, like, taking a line item out, you know? I'm almost positive, so that's not, I think because we're running this, the new, you know, clerk work system, I believe with the old software we use, it probably would have been more of a, there would have been more of an obstacle in doing it, doing it this way, to waive the fees, so.
So I know you, I think you've explained this at the very beginning of the conversation, but when we talked a little while ago, you were even, you were even apprehensive about waiving the fees because otherwise, from the.
Well, I was, I was only apprehensive about waiving the fees. I was, I was, my concern was not so much waiving the fees, was, it was just the fact that their name wasn't anywhere on the registrations that they gave me, you know?
Okay.
That, that's what, from, from my perspective, that, that's what concerns me, because I, being a, you know, an agent of the DMV, I need to follow DMV rules and every, and it, I had quite a runaround with the DMV on this, and, and for a while, I thought we weren't gonna be able to do this at all. And then finally, the Assistant Bureau Chief came back to me and says, okay, I got a solution, this is what we're gonna do. So I'm totally 100% comfortable with, with going ahead with these registrations, just the matter of the town waiving the fee.
All right, and I don't wanna speak for all three of us, but I believe going forward, they're gonna be waived, because that's how it's been, and I'm sure it makes sense, but I don't think tonight is the night to make that decision until we just understand a little more.
Agreed.
But I also wanna make sure that CNJ knows that we're working on it, and we're not, we're not trying to show up there or anything like that.
Sure, sure. I've been in contact with my P over there, and I can, I can send him an email tomorrow and tell him what, where, you know, it's in the works, and.
All right.
Yeah.
I am fine with that. All right. Do you think we should get a copy of their agreement?
Yeah, it is. Um, it might, might make some sense for, for the, kinda for the future, and, like I said, I had, I mean.
Yeah, if they have it, let's see if we can get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever can help us determine.
Right, right.
All right, so.
Yeah. Sure.
All right. Okay?
Nothing, nothing?
And I just wanna, George, I just wanna call and thanks for, thank you for this, and the incident that happened last week. I, I didn't see it in the paper, but I would much rather hear it from somebody.
Well, good morning.
Good night.
That's a great.
So thank you.
I suppose there is nobody going on.
Thank you for that. No, he's all right, right?
Absolutely. He, they actually helped him walk off the machine.
Yeah, I know that.
So he was, okay, as far as I believe, he was back to talk with Osher a couple, before the scene was cleared. It's a, I actually can't charge anybody with it, because we don't have any. Paver operator was hit by a dump truck. A paving machine was hit by a dump truck and spun the paver operator around in his seat, and pinned him in the seat there, and he was jarred alike to get him up. Right, Sean? But they, that was, ended the day a little quicker than.
And he took a day off, but he's feeling okay now?
He, he did not work Friday, I don't, I mean Thursday, I don't know what the situation today, but he was sore. Very, very understandable.
Just to protect the town, Osher did come and investigate.
Yeah, I, I knew that.
So.
I was there, absolutely.
All right. I got a couple POs, and there'll be more to come as soon as I get my bill from CNJ, unfortunately. Need to put a set of tires on a pickup truck with Sullivan, and I got a quote from Sullivan Tire for $877.80, that's the state bed price for tires.
Eight hundred and seventy-seven?
Eight seventy-seven eighty. That's for Ford and tires, Mountain Valentin, get rid of tires. The PO for that'll be 2036.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up PO 2036, the Sullivan Tire for $877.80?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have another one, Seporia Guidelines, that's a company that does line striping. The line item is 2,500, so I put it in for that. It's probably gonna come under that, because we're not gonna, I, I don't see the sense of paving, uh, striping Jesse Doe in the condition it's in.
Oh, okay. What was that on the company?
It's Seporia Guidelines, out of Ethel, Mass. They do the town, they do it both at the same time, where we don't have a lot of roads, it's cheaper to use that company than it is to have somebody else come in and do it. PO is 2038, and that's in our line striping line, for $2,500.
And what roads are we gonna be doing?
All the ones we have striping on would be Church, Foundry, Bear Road, and Clement. And we usually do Jesse Doe, but like I said, I can't see wasting money on that this year, because we do have any income, we're doing something with it.
They're gonna put lines on Clement?
Yeah.
How about, are those the only streets that we strike, besides Jesse Doe?
That's the only ones that, that, yeah, Towns Street.
Okay.
Cause the rest of them, I mean, the rest of them are like the state road, so they take care of that part.
Okay.
All right, so I move forward the PO number 2038 for Seporia?
Seporia.
Seporia Guidelines.
Seporia Guidelines, $2,500. Okay, is there any discussion? Is that gonna, what is that gonna be done?
About 10 o'clock tonight.
Say something?
Yeah, they called me last week, they said, we're getting ready to go back to Massachusetts, so if you want that price.
Okay. Do you know how many miles that is, George?
Not really, I'm not exactly sure. It's Bear Road, whatever, that, I think that might be two miles there.
Mile.
Just under a mile on Clement, Church Street, just here around the corner, and then Foundry, so it's so much, it's so much a foot for, for the paint. And it's been running just under $2,000, usually, so.
Okay. We can vote on that one?
We do?
We do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. You know, you don't wanna talk about roads, and you, you can, you wanna hold off on?
Um, the road planning?
Yes.
Well, actually, as we go through budget, probably, you might consider.
Okay, I'll just take that, so, yeah. And you wanna wait on the rest of stuff until we go through budget, gotta get some stuff to talk about and see. I got a question. I'm not opposed to buying used equipment if the town board is not opposed to buying used equipment, however, that becomes an issue if it's in the CIP. Is there a way of buying equipment that comes available, like, say, a used piece of equipment, worth half the price or so of a, like a payloader, or a small mini escalator, if, for say, half the price of what a new one would cost, can we pull from CIP money during the year to purchase that piece of equipment?
No, I wanna say no, cause it's gonna go as a warrant, but.
Can maybe a state office put in a warrant for that?
Uh, well, so are you asking for a warrant, for them to consider a new warrant article?
I, I would think it would make sense to have a warrant article, okay, as long as that piece of equipment is in the CIP, and say, like, two years ago, I came across having a chance to buy a sidewalk machine for half the price, that we could have bought it, but it was in December. We know, they're not gonna hold this piece of equipment. You've gotta buy these deals when they're available, like you buy a car, if you see a car that's, you know?
How long do they last?
What's that?
The machines that you buy, I think.
Payloaders?
Yeah.
A payloader is, you're gonna get 20 years out of it, you know, a, a payloader or something like that, you know, but you're gonna pay a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for it. But if you could get a leased return payloader, or a leased return mini escalator for half that cost, it's a benefit to both. You know, I mean, we're not gonna use it like a town or a city of Dover, or a city of Rochester, but using a piece of equipment, you know, I mean, why don't we use it? Like, in the summertime, a mini escalator would be handy as heck to do our shoulder work, because we're far behind, all that everybody knows. And, you know, you can't do it with a backhoe. With a backhoe, you move three feet, and you gotta keep moving, you know, and you can't do a good job with it.
So what I would say about that, George, is we, we, you and the board, me, when you come up with a, I formulated a plan or something that you wanted to get anyway, you knew you wanna get it, something comes up, so then we write a warrant article that says X amount of money, and if a piece of equipment comes up that, it'll be worded right, a piece of equipment comes up that the town could use, and it's cheaper, it's a much better deal than we'd allocate, say, $50,000 for, and then, it's up to really, then it's up to the voters.
No, it's up to the select group to have, to get the okay to make that purchase if it's in the, if it's already in the CIP.
As long as, no, let me finish, so as long as it gets, you know, town, it goes to the warrant article, and.
Correct.
Town approved.
Vote, right.
Then it's up to, so, but, let me, you know, I mean.
Right, that, yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
So what you, what we wanna, what you wanna do is present it well, in the article saying, this is what you want for, so when our voters, when people vote, they say, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
So that's how I would approach that, and I don't know if you guys have any more advice about that.
The problem is, the CIP plan is already formulated for this year, and it's going.
I, I was talking to Joe Dech today, he said he could still put them through in there, it doesn't have to be, but this year, they put it in the plan.
Oh, for future.
For future, it's not for this year.
Yep.
No, but I mean, it's something to have in a window, in case, you know, in case something, you know, by the time we're ready to buy one, or something like that, like, that next year, they wanna put some money into that, for those pieces of equipment, and you happen to see one that, you know, you can buy for half the price for a new one, I'm just looking at the cost of the town and everything else, you know, to benefit.
I like that idea, by the way.
You know, I mean, that's, you don't need a brand new piece of equipment.
So what, what would, did, have you presented, well, you'll have to present the needs for it at the time that it gets considered by the CIP committee?
Right, he, he asked me if I just put those pieces in there, so he can put it in the CIP as future planning, you know? But that's, I just wanna know if, you know, because there is no other options to buy a piece of equipment other than go into the vote, but that's, you lose those deals, you know, and it's like, if you have a brand new car, I mean, if you have a car you're interested in sitting on the lot, then it's not gonna sit there forever.
Right, I think the timing is the issue, you know, when they plan what they're gonna spend out of capital, you know, I think that's gonna be the issue. Like, do you, are you saying bring it forward every single year as a warrant article in case you find something?
Right, have that as a, have that in there as a way of purchasing a piece of used equipment. Have something in there of a way of purchasing a piece of used equipment. As long as you have it in a plan, that, you know, if it's a piece of equipment that you already have in a plan to buy, is what I'm looking at. Not something that, oh, we need this yesterday, you know? But I mean, something to look at, that you're looking at to purchase later on, and if you have a chance to get unused for half the money, or what have you, you know, a lease return sometime, you can get a pretty good deal on a piece of equipment, or, you know, on a.
So it's a waiver to the existing ones, right? When we, a waiver to the existing ones, or?
Well, yeah, you would not, it would be taking that piece out of the CIP for future, you know, I mean, you'd be, you know, I mean, you would keep it as a replacement down the road, however, but, I mean, put it into purchase at a lower price, everything makes sense anyway. And, you know, I mean, companies buy used equipment all the time, because they get good deals on it. And if I could get a couple pieces of known to use equipment, if he was gonna trade it, you know, I mean, those guys take care of their equipment. And I'm not just saying that, but I know how some of these guys take care of their equipment, and you're gonna get a good piece of equipment someday.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about how they would word that on the warrant article for fix up or appropriating that money, you know, that, that would be the part I have to figure out.
It's just a thought I've been having, and, you know, because there is a lot of times, you get a chance, you know, someone, we get mail all the time about used equipment is available there that's in, you know, in good shape, and you buy a truck, you know, a portion of the money you need. It's not like you're buying a fire truck, it's not like you're buying something else. A fire truck, you wanna have new from the red door, or something like that, but, you know, a piece of highway equipment, you can get away with buying used equipment.
Well, I don't know, I can't speak for fire, but I mean, I would think if you could, if they wanted to get a $200,000 fire engine, and it was a year old, and they get it for $100,000, and it's the same truck, I would think they would be interested in that. I don't wanna speak for fire, but.
Yeah, I'm not going there.
They don't lease many fire trucks for a year.
No, I'm saying if it was a year old.
Two hundred, they didn't even default parts.
I just made up numbers.
Yeah. I wasn't trying to bring that on.
No, 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 no.
No, but I just, you know, it's something I think we ought to start looking at.
I think it's a good idea.
And, you know, and just for purposes of saving money on equipment and stuff like that, you know?
Right, and it's just how we presented the warrant, and, and the town people know Right, and it's just how we presented the warrant, and, and the townspeople know what we're getting it for, and it's really, we're trying to save money in the big picture, so.
I just wanted to bring, and another thing I gotta ask with that accident last week, that fed up our police officer, we had to unseat five hours. Can that be billed to that trucking company that caused the accident?
Uh, we'll have to get an opinion about that, I, we don't know, um, we can't answer that for sure, but.
I'm thinking we should be able to shut somebody else with the, uh, time that we can use.
Do we go through our insurance company, do you have insurance?
We do. We do.
I mean, we could, go there, I guess.
I'm sure we should be able to answer that question.
I would think.
I would say, Georgia, that, that, that should happen. We, yeah, we have that ability to do that a lot in the fire department, if there's something like that, somebody that caused an accident, whether it's negligence or something else, we can bill for that stuff. So I'm sure he can do the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, those guys are tied up too, I mean, everyone's tied up for, you know, for five hours. Why should we pay for police duty, to, you know, watch that interception for us if, you know, we're gonna be tied up for the accident?
Are you telling me to spend three hours writing a report or four hours?
Has it ever happened before?
I don't know, but, you know, I mean.
So, so a lot of times a drunk driver hits a pole or something, and we're tied up for an extended amount of time? The same thing could happen, is, is the police department can bill for the detail time, we can bill for it, the power company bills for the cost of the pole, all of that, and for time, and insurance pays for all of that. Some, some towns actually have written into their.
Policy.
Policies that if an out-of-town resident gets in an accident in town, that the fire department actually bills for the fire department's time. All of that, and insurance companies will pay that, it becomes a slippery slope of.
Billing for services, you gotta be careful with that, but it's, it's routine. Same thing with us, we have an incident with a train going through town, which we've had in the past, we bill the rental.
So I would think in this situation, I don't wanna say easier, but since it's a company, as opposed to a private resident, I would think it would be easier to have their insurance pay it.
You know, it's, it's a thought, 'cause I, I know it's, it's doable, you know, I mean, this way the, the insurance company would have to look into it, but, uh, why should we be paying five hours for them to be standing by at the scene? Doing the job they were doing for us, but now they were doing it for the accident?
Who manages our insurance?
Frank.
I remember, I've got Chuck.
It's Frank, I don't know, I don't know.
Do you, um, what was the name of the company that was doing the work?
B and D Trucking. They're gonna, uh, I was talking with the safety guy, was on scene of the accident, of course, with rocks. He says it'd be on scene before it even happened.
It was Rock's, though?
No, it's not a rock truck, it's B and D Contracting out of Litchfield, New Hampshire, K L C. Who's the company that owned the truck that got the pay.
So they were working with Rock's?
Yeah, they're subcontract, they hire, they always hire a dump truck, they don't have them, they're on, so they, they all hire a.
That's a good point, brought up, George, it's not just since it's one company, we'll work on another company.
Well, we've had some stories with that company, so, probably we'll get a little bit out of it if we can.
The one thing with that, that you gotta remember, that if you do bill for that, and you get remuneration for it, you usually go back into the general fund. It's not anything that's gonna go to his department or to ours, or to P D, general fund receives that.
Right, but. Yeah, I know, it's still gonna come out of our budget one way or another, but it's still, it comes back to the town, it's not.
Yeah, the town, the town is getting something back, so.
Great, great.
Could we, Mr.?
No, we can talk, we'll talk about, uh.
I'm just trying to. Thank you. All right.
Um.
Fire is up?
Yeah, John, John's not gonna make it.
Okay.
Um, you said that Sean might be able to talk about this, uh, the, um, security, security system, example.
Okay.
Um, did, from Burns, anything on that, um, security for town hall?
We already had, yeah, we had the quote from Burns.
Okay.
We received that at the same time we received the fire alarm quote.
Oh, that was part of that statement?
Um.
For town hall?
It was a separate quote, we received it at the same time, uh, he has a copy, Caroline has a copy, or had a copy, um, and I have a copy.
Did you email it to us by chance?
Um, it wasn't mine, two emails, so.
Okay.
I, I have a.
Could you have had a, do you have?
Yeah, I have it on my laptop.
Um, yeah, well, so, I mean, we obviously won't have a chance to have a look at that with Sean, so, um, if you could send it, we can, I think we'll probably wanna take a look at that before we make any decisions.
Yes.
Um, so we can push that out again for the next meeting.
If, I agree, I just.
Just one more on that topic, did you physically sign the town hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, finish, I didn't mean to interrupt you, that's what I'm saying, town hall.
The town hall contract for Burns, because somehow, the fire department got signed twice instead of the town hall.
Oh, no, I think, I didn't, I think you signed it last week, I didn't look at it.
Right, it was last week, because we noticed that.
Oh, okay.
That's why there was the delay of, did you guys approve the P O four weeks ago?
Yeah.
But somehow.
They printed the wrong one?
They printed the same one twice, you guys.
Okay, I'll ask Chuck, um.
Yeah.
If you signed it last week, that was the one that I, I.
I'm sure last week. No one was giving them something.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll ask him to reprint it, and one of us can come in and sign it.
I can come in. I can do a lot, I'm busy.
I can probably reprint it now if you guys want.
Oh, you can, can I?
I, I probably can.
Okay.
So we don't have any, per state fire department business, aren't any P Os or anything, kind of, probably will next week, but we're here to address the emails that you sent us about budgetary questions, you wanna do that now?
We're gonna try to get through all the other stuff?
Right.
And then go into budget workshop?
Yeah, we won't be talking about.
Yeah, it should, it should go pretty quick.
Yeah, because like I said, I don't have any.
Okay.
Business on that end of it, yeah, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Let you continue along with your other, you, you get, hey, more of that.
You have the access and the camera system on the agenda, I don't know if you guys wanna talk about that for the fire department?
Um, yes, actually, um, it is, so, um, so, did you have a chance to look at Sean's proposal, Jack?
I'm pretty sure the one we're talking about, that's been fluctuated around for a couple of years.
So you'd sent an email, kind of describing what you were proposing for work?
Yes, I've seen that.
So, we, I'll just bring, um, Jack to speak a little bit, 'cause I don't know, I thought I forwarded all the emails.
I'd probably get greeted, but I read a lot this week.
Um, so Sean is proposing, um, to do the work for the security cameras and access cards that people have. Um, we have a, also have a, a big, um, the, um, Burns security system. And, um, so, um, Sean, do you wanna just kind of describe a little bit about your background, and, um, so Jack can kind of.
Sure, um, so I've been in I T for a little over twenty-eight years, um, started out in working for a hospital, worked for Cisco for seventeen years, now I work for another manufacturer, called Infulox. Um, last eighteen months ago, when the pandemic started, um, the fire department basically had no access, so we were unable to join Zoom meetings from the fire station, unable to do what we need at that. We worked with the SLU board to put a whole new network system in the fire department with wireless access points, network drops in all of the offices, et cetera. Part of that system has the ability to add both cameras and door access control. So my proposal to the board was to add those components onto the existing work that I already did.
Yeah.
Eighteen months ago, um, cheaper for the town.
What's the cost for that?
So, let me try to tell you the right numbers, um, basically, we can do all of it for a little bit under eleven thousand dollars. Um, the Burns quote was closer than that, for the same amount of equipment. And basically, what I offered to do is, um, you know, do it at the standard detail rate that the town normally pays if the police department does anything, um. And then just charge them for the, the actual exact cost of the equipment, just like I did when I did it before, I think I'd go, buy a box cat five, cat six, they pay exactly what I pay, the equipment that's all from the manufacturer. It is not the company that I work for, it's a company called U P equity. You guys pay, you know, the, the, what I pay for the equipment reimbursed for it.
Do we need these?
So.
Or are they, a nice to have, or do we need them, I guess?
So right now, we have no way of telling who gets into the fire station at that time.
Okay.
We've had issues where we've had people hanging out in the parking lot at the fire station, bouncing balls off the side, side of the fire station, behind the fire station, doing stuff. So, it's a town building, uh, it's also a public shelter, so, you know, some of the cameras recover, you know, common areas in the building, somebody falls and gets hurt, we'll actually have a recording of that, you know, much like you have here at town hall. Right, you have access control, you have cameras here at town hall, it was part of the warrant article for twenty-five thousand that was approved by the town. This is just, it's not the authorization to spend the money.
Um, so what was our cost for the alarm system, the fire alarm system?
Fourteen thousand and some change, just under that, I think, and it's probably gonna come in lower, because we decided to do both, so we said there'd be additional cost savings for that.
Um, so when Sean originally proposed this, um, one of my concerns that I brought forward was, um, he's not operating under LLC, um, or, so he's operating basically as an individual, um, so my concerns were, um.
Is there any legal issue?
I don't know if there's a legal issue, that's a good point, um, but, um, also, i- if there was a problem, you know, we wouldn't have any, no guarantee. So, I suggested we wait until, you know, three members to kind of hash it out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, if, for, for example, you did the work and hit by a bus tomorrow, I can say that, because it could happen, um, we don't have any recourse on any issues and support for it. But I, I understand that, you know, there's definitely a good cost savings at the same time.
So if I could just address that, um, you pick the equipment, the gentleman that does our I T work actually consults and you pick what you want after I put it in the fire station here, so it is a common, it, it's not a specialized equipment that I'm building custom for, it's, it's a standard equipment. So, he would be able to, to log in and do that. Today, John does the same type of access control as does Will for here, as far as turning users on and off. So it, all of the, the data.
And the equipment's under warranty and everything, right?
No, technically, yes, the equipment is under warranty from the manufacturer, um, you know, it, it's, it's like all computer equipment, right? The warranty is only as good as, you know, for a very short amount of time compared to how long most of these systems last, I mean, you look at the camera system that's in here, and, you know, the fire alarm system is twenty years old. The warranty was five years for certain components, and even last.
Yeah, I wasn't looking at it long-term, I was just, no, no, just for sure, I mean, if something baults in the first couple of years, it's, that's.
It would be covered. Yeah, that's gonna be covered, and, you know, as I, I said in my email, I'll pay for it initially, and the town will reimburse me, so if the equipment didn't get installed for some reason, the town would reimburse me for it. So, there's not a lot of liability, I wouldn't be working as a town employee, so technically, the town would be covered, just like I was to do anything else, you know, it's, much like having, you know, George built the shelter for recycling or, or other things. You know, it's within my capabilities, could, just if you want.
What do you think?
The way I look at it is, it's, my personal opinion isn't okay with it, but I want, we always be okay with it, um, but I'm, I look at it as Sean has done a lot of extra, extra work for us. On the ground, went down, did a lot of research for us, um, we're very helpful to the town, um, and I think this would be helpful, so.
Okay.
My opinion is I'm okay with it, I have to.
Um, so just one, a couple questions, Sean, so the proposal that Burns gave us, what is their guarantee and their support offering for the system?
So, theirs is, and I'm just trying to bring it back up so that I can, it's the same contract that you signed for the fire alarm system.
Yep.
You know, it, it's, there's no warranty on it, there's no maintenance of it, you pay yearly contract if you wanna continue that, with that maintenance for, and then coming in and testing it every year. So, you know, most of the individual components are, you know, between two and five hundred dollars, it's when you add up, you say, you know, there's pen cameras, and there's, you know, six hard drives, and there's a switch, and there's all of these individual things. So, you know, my recommendation would be you don't pay for an extended warranty on that stuff, because the cost of buying one of the components.
It's cheaper.
Right.
Um, is this all low voltage work?
It is.
Nothing?
It's all cat six, it's all, um, cat six are actually lower DC voltage, door openers, things like that, so it's not electrical work.
Okay.
Everything is covered by the, the power overheat and switch, as far as the cat six scaling, I've been trained on how to install and terminate it, um, you know, if you guys come down to the fire station and look at the work that I do versus the work that was done here, it, it's.
It's not many.
All of my boxes come down, and they're in conduit, and they go to, you know, an actual outlet.
I am coming there, I wanna set something up, yeah.
Love to see it.
Grace.
Yeah.
What'd you say, you want? I wanna set something up to be down there.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, so does this require a building permit? Um, it's over.
It does not.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
It does not, because it's equipment, so just like you wouldn't say, you know, hey, we're buying ten new computers, you need to buy, you need to have a building permit for it. The actual low voltage installation, you're talking, you know, twelve drops, it's gonna be, you know, a thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars for those drops, so it would not require a, a building term, permit.
I'm thinking in terms of dollars, and we have the building inspector sitting here.
Yeah.
Um, you know, because I think it's more about the dollar value than it is, um, about the safety, um, and, and Tom, you, I mean, feel free to chime in on that.
As soon as far as the dollar value is, the fee would be waived for, I mean, it's a poll organization anyway, so, I mean, there wouldn't be a permit fee regardless of the, of the dollar amount, and I agree, a chief would be pretty much just equipment, low voltage, that we wouldn't be looking for a permit for.
He wants to come down and inspect it, if that would make the board feel fine, I'm, I'm more than happy to have him do that, it's, um, and like I said, when you come down, you'll see the existing work that's done, and, okay, pretty particular.
So, I, I guess the one thing I'll ask for, um, is that when we get billed for this, we can itemize a list of equipment, um, and, and labor as well, um, and that will also help us with our inventory that Rain has been talking about for a while, um, so.
It's on the list.
Yep.
It's on the list.
Yeah, and I, and I had mentioned that in my email, that you guys will get, you know, itemized receipts, if I go and buy, you know, cat five, the R J forty-five Keystone Jacks, all of that would be itemized out, and that's the same thing I did before.
Okay.
So you can see.
Okay.
That's all I have for questions, and.
So are you moving forward any tonight, or is nothing there to present tonight, right?
Uh, I think it's just a matter of us, um, agreeing to move forward with Sean's proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, we did put together a purchase order, because that way it allows me to have something to, to put in for reimbursement for.
Okay.
And we just went with the, the remaining funds out of that line item.
All right.
So, so the entire cost of the fire alarm system and, um, the access and security system falls within the, the constraints of the warrant article?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
It'll, you'll.
Exactly, right.
It's probably gonna be under that.
Okay.
Or I know it's gonna be under that, I just don't have the.
Okay.
You guys wanna make a motion, and I'll second it?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second, but I'm just trying to make sure what, what the exact motion is, just continue forward with the remainder of the work under the warrant article, because it's only twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay. Paul and David?
Fine.
Hi.
And Jack, you had the question earlier about, is this a nice to have or a want to have?
Yes.
When we had the warrant article money, we originally went for getting the fire alarm system put in, we had X dollars there for that, and we stayed at the twenty-five for the whole warrant article. So what was left over, we were able to look at this system, Sean's abilities to do it, we were able to upgrade it, because the doors and our access system of the fire station is, is poor at S. And we could upgrade it and get some state-of-the-art stuff, where cameras also secure the area, P D loves the idea of cameras, 'cause it can also view that intersection, so there ever be an issue there, they would be able to get that information off of that. So it covers a lot of nice to haves.
Yeah.
Not want, but nice to haves, under the warrant article, which we already had go through with the public, and they approved it, so, we're getting a lot of bang for the buck for, for what we're submitting for.
We've had six times, just in the last month and a half, that we've come, P D's called us, or Dover headquarters has called us, and he said, your doors are open, side doors are open, they don't know why.
Where they are?
But they're open, yeah.
Yeah, two of them are gonna get a call, they're gonna go to the fire station, fix a door.
Did you talk to the firefighters about it?
We, we've talked to the firefighters, the.
Every time we have a call, make sure it's locked when you leave and secured, so, it's just the, the mechanism itself is old, failure, we've already put in a, another P O all the way down, it goes right back up.
Yeah.
So we remember.
You think it's going down?
Well, no, these are the actual man doors.
Oh, yeah, 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 the entry doors.
They'll be.
So you're replacing those?
We're, we're replacing the lock sets and the pushbars to open them, all of that is getting replaced, and this is the actual system. Right now, there's a keypad on the door, problem is, is those keypads have been there the past fifteen years.
So those, that's the only access is via a keypad?
Take them a number on the keypad and that allows you to get in. We have no record of who's coming and going. With this system, we'll be able to say, this person came into the station at this time. So we'll know definitively everybody that goes into that station. And then you look at the cameras and you can say, hey, you know, it's not just this one person, it was these three people with them. Or, you know, if there's this going on in the parking lot, the PD will actually be able to log in and look at the cameras remotely. So, you know, they can actually see if something's going on at the station, on the station.
So you have one code for building that everybody uses?
Yeah, which is part of the reason it needs to change.
I mean, because you've had turnover as well.
Exactly. Long life of that station.
What would they steal though?
So, you know...
You could put somebody in there that has a specific need and wants to go in and steal air packs or steal firefighting here, just going to cause vandalism. There's an awful lot of stuff in that station that has...
It would have to be firefighters.
It's over. Yeah, yeah, but it could be somebody in there just starting there.
Or reselling, maybe.
Reselling, maybe.
You know, you have a pack that's several thousand dollars, the, you know, the hydraulic tools that the town purchased several years ago, used to wall batteries that are very expensive.
That I could see, something generic like that.
There's lots of stuff that it would be very easy to resell.
I got a quick question for you guys, off topic, the jaws of life, the older jaws of life that we had. We've got a new pair. The reason we got the new pair was because the old pair was just so outdated, right? It wasn't that you guys used it up.
It was old and getting to the point of being unserviceable. It's still in service, it's still working, it's still fine, it's our backup. But it was getting to the point where if we had taken in, there's a failure rate, they probably would not be able to repair it. And the new one we got with the electric, its capabilities is six to eightfold over what the old system. The hydraulic tools have a lot more pushing and power than the hydraulic stuff.
All right, so you got the new one and the newer one still backup.
Yeah.
In case it, and then if it...
Well, because we carry on the first new engine, with that engine goes up and down mutually, that goes with it. You don't strip stuff off. But we still have the benefit of having the older system still in town on the utility in case we have another incident.
The old system is the second oldest in the new venture.
Well, I won't go into detail about how the resident talking in his past, what he did use. There's not the impression that you guys had used the whole thing up?
Yeah.
And I'm like, you know, the old one, and I'm like, it was kind of more of an outdated type piece of equipment than it was that they used it so much that it didn't work no more. That's more correct?
I hear that all the time.
Is that more correct though?
Yes, much more correct. I hear that all the time about the fire department, everybody seems to know more about it than they think they do. And if they want to know, send them to me. I'm more than willing to take anybody, train them, show them, educate them, because that's what my job is. Instead of rumors flying around. See, you have me clarify something, which is totally wrong.
Just getting a part of conversation.
Feel free to send them by my way. So I'm glad Jack wanted to come. All over the place. I send them every day. I believe in here.
Thank you.
As well as that, we'll just take our seats and let everybody else...
Yeah, we want to do one, man.
I think we'll get through these next things pretty quickly. I tried to organize it in a way that...
So I want to go to trust fund actions for 2021, so I'm not sure that that is...
So we got an email, maybe Salma, so she's part of the trustees of the trust fund.
Actually, I did see this, I did see it as, I think it was a large amount of money.
Oh, yes, it's about, I haven't sent the warrant article.
Yeah.
That are being transferred to the town.
Okay.
And then there's others from the, the town has to put money in.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Okay, that was really bad.
Oh, no, it's fine. So I really wanted to get some background on the next steps for us, since we don't have any background on this. So I thought, was hoping that Salma would help us, let us know.
Yeah, please.
So it looks like there's a couple of options for us to approve the movement of money, and that's to write a letter or present receipts, is that correct?
I can't remember.
Yeah, that's true.
But Dana takes care of everything so well, that Julie and I are not that responsible.
Okay.
I think that's accurate.
So I think we have reached a hand. On what, what I was going to use to...
Well, they sent, she sent me...
I think we talked to...
Okay, was that, okay, I'll catch you later.
I was going to read it, but it was...
You need to present receipts or you have to, you have to write a letter, or sign something?
Right. So she attached a spreadsheet that outlines the movement of funds that need to happen in 2021. It includes funds to be received from the town and to be dispersed to the town. For the trustees to disperse funds, there needs to be documentation of expenses incurred. This has to be done in two, oh, it's been done two ways in the past. Providing receipts from the vendors of the equipment or service or a signed request from the select board stating the work of the warrant article has been accomplished and requesting the amount to be dispersed. So in terms, I think we probably need to get with Chuck on some of these payments that have happened. And confirm, well, we need to confirm what's been paid and what has not been paid. Let's see.
When does this have to be done, Bob?
It didn't say. Oh, wait a minute, well, I'm sorry.
Before the end of the fiscal year.
Right, it doesn't have a date on it. So what I would say we would do is get with Chuck to see what's been paid, see if we have receipts for those items. And that any work that is, needs to be paid has been completed. So, does anybody from the board want to volunteer to get with Chuck on that?
You know what, I'll volunteer to get Chuck that. You got luck on that, there's a chance he checked us a little bit.
Okay.
Hopefully he checked tomorrow anyway, maybe take, maybe up a minute early.
Okay.
Like around two or something, try it.
Oh, so he's on the commission next week?
Yeah, he's on, next week, yeah, next week.
So we just really need to get a list from him of any bills that have come in for these warrants.
So I'll do that, we should have Chuck on the phone. And I might come and see him anyway, get a couple of things over, but before, I may be up with that, but, yep.
Okay.
I'll reach out to him.
All right, sounds good.
Yep, give it to him. I'll bring, Tom, you want to come up?
Sure.
I'll just start with a few things, we'll pin so. I'm going to jump down to the...
I tell, I'm ready. Next week.
I'm sorry, you can't, but...
Oh, yeah. We wait that.
I'll just bring up something real quick about the vertical structure that I had talked to Jay Stevens, the civil engineer, about it, and he had, I don't know the gentleman's name, came out, that was the PD.
We talked about that.
Yeah, and he said that structurally for now, you know, putting the columns on, I don't know if you guys know this structure is fine. And then come probably spring, I'm going to say spring, that we should be looking at replacing the brickwork just for structure. I don't know if you're up to date on that at all.
I hadn't seen that yet.
Okay, so I'll fill in that one. And the reason we have here is Bill Hall, Ken Paul, go to Bill's back to oversight.
It's Phil, Phil Rosie.
Who's that?
Phil Rosie, R-O-Z-Z-I. Yeah, he came in, he said that he was doing restoring and painting. And so Chuck asked if we wanted to take a look at it and pay him.
What about him?
Yeah. So what I had been thinking, and I asked Tom to kind of maintain our conversation, because I think we talked a little bit about some oversight, even when Caroline was here, about some of the projects that are being done.
Yep, just Tom, all right.
I think we have a little bit of background. Did Caroline ask you to look at the plumbing?
She hadn't, no.
Okay, all right.
I think she was waiting to see if there was going to be a facilities director, a position established, person hired, or... No, two handed question.
Okay, so one of the things we kind of talked about is if Tom would be willing to kind of oversee some of the work that is being done to make sure it's done correctly, and, you know, kind of sign off that we're ready to pay for it.
Right, so we're hoping for now until we decide how we're going to do it, what we're going to do, how we're going to handle facilities director and caring of the building, just a couple of small projects that we've had, like the plumbing done. And the vertical work, sign, before we sign off. If you didn't mind, just, I mean, like walking through, I don't mind walking through, just make sure the plumbing done, see any issues. Vertical I've looked at, the engineer's looked at it, so I don't know if there's any real issues that you didn't have to sign off on that. I'm perfectly signed on that whole thing, you know. But just...
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Before I paid anybody, I would make them come back and clean up all the paint chips on the ground.
Ah, that's what we're going to figure, that's the thing that we should probably look at.
That could be like painting, the wrong person gets...
I'm sure that is lit, yeah. You even have it in the building.
There's no way it's not.
It's lit.
There's no way it's not.
And that's hitting track in your building, Paul, and they also use out front for bus stop with kids every morning. So they could do a lot better cleaning that up.
Okay, on that topic, I did question painters weeks ago about whether or not it was let painted. They both said that they had tested it and it wasn't.
Wasn't.
There's some, I think it was in '77, there've been a couple of paintings and a couple of upgrades. And after '77, it's let painted and under manufacturing. So, I mean, I didn't see the test results. There's probably something, and it certainly, just from an aesthetic standpoint, would make sense.
Yeah, so, so hopefully the information's right, it's not exactly, I guess we should look at that. But if this, this job or not, team, I don't know, I can't really know this part, but are you sure? Would you know us?
I think I know this. I've kicked up a screw there and I saw some leather on it.
All right. It's quite a bit of paint scrapings and whatnot, pretty much all over.
All right, I'll reach out, I guess I'll reach out from there.
So we do have a name, and Chuck probably has contact.
I have, I have someone too, you don't have, you know, I got it.
R-O-Z-Z-I.
Phil Rosie.
I want to take mine, before I'm done, Tom, I want to check it, my two words to figure out, because I've got a few things. All right, so, anything else to add though?
Well, actually, yes, I wanted to actually have a discussion with Tom about his interest in maybe the availability to help kind of manage any work that has to happen to the building.
Sort of fill that role.
Yes, and I don't know, so I don't know if we consider it, you know, offering the facilities director position to you or how we can frame it, but you as all people probably have the most expertise on the needs of a building. So I thought...
I won't contradict.
I guess we frame it like this, if, if, if we need to expend X amount of, we had, whatever we'll say, building inspector is going to be done, and the facilities directors is going to be six hours a week. I don't think we need that much, but, you know, if you give yourself using two or three hours a week to do this to keep up with it, then we just would pay them.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, more if you have the time, I should say.
And the interest.
Yeah, and the interest. We were just...
Do we have a job description?
There's a bullet list of things that we're hoping for, but it isn't really complete. We can share it with you.
Yeah, but you could, I'd certainly be open to think about it.
You could probably help write it.
Yes, I could. Caroline had sent it, so let me see if I can... Great, so I think they probably want to make sure that it's the right fit for you as well. In terms of time though, Tom, do you think that you would have time for something like that?
I'm not sure, I, I pay for seven hours a week and having a lot of superlative inspections. But if it wasn't too many more...
The way I look at it, and I don't want to speak for Ed and George, but I will, I feel that Ed and George feel pretty comfortable maintaining and understanding what the builders do. They necessarily feel that they, again, I was speaking for you, but I don't think they feel that they need a facilities director in there very often.
Nope, I agree.
Fire department, they've been a lot in the last few years of the company, so I don't see a very strong need for a facilities director. If there was facility director there either, but town hall would probably be the brunt of the issue.
Yeah, sure.
Does that make sense to you, Tom?
It does, so, I mean, certainly the fire and how you folks can talk about it if you're on.
Yeah, so I don't see it being, you know, a bunch of hours a week. I think for that, maybe just a couple, you know, one week it might be three or four, one week it might be none. So it comes, we don't have a whole lot coming over to it. Perfect.
Okay, I'll have to dig through the email, Tom, but I can forward it to, I'm going to have to make a decision today. I mean, if you wouldn't mind, just, if we can agree that for the current projects, you know, we could use some sort of site records and, you know, you could bill as ours and it's that facilities director position.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that.
If we have to agree on who to be in as current rate as well. And then, you know, we have a longer term discussion once we look at what the needs are. It's like...
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Jack, it's going to be good.
I was going to say, why don't we wait, have you looked at anything, then we can adjust to make sure we're paying them off.
Yeah, I don't think it's like weird for the side time.
That, that, that was my point, is, you know, I want to make sure that they hear you.
Yeah, but it, yeah, and, and the building and stuff don't get in the clock in place.
Right, I mean, I, you can't go a couple of weeks, but just give the details, maybe next week we can chat with them.
Yes, I did get some feedback from a resident town outside of the building needing some attention. So I think...
Accurate assessment.
That would be one of the things I'm for sure about the requirements of this, is to do a general assessment of the condition, maybe help us find the right people to do the work, not necessarily to do the work, Tom, but...
Yes.
To find the right people, and just kind of the oversight of the work's getting done, that's what I'm...
I agree, yeah. I thought it would be a good thing. Time I've got is, if we talk about it, we can build some more technical, some more general project, we can make sure it works. You know, necessarily, what we're going to do, like, is I'd be up there, I'm supposed to put the dog in the eye and cross the TV, so, perfect.
Just treat things that happen.
I'll, no, I'm only here to...
Like when the fire alarm system gets done.
Yep.
That will be probably two weeks worth of daily check-ins probably. And anytime they're in the PD, they'll actually have a PD detail down there. Because they can't be in the police department area without somebody from PD being in the building because of the evidence and the CGS requirements and all of that. So just keep that in mind as you're looking at schedule. They're supposed to come in October to start that one. When we did the furnace stuff, I came in twice a day, at least sometimes for four times a day if they had questions and stuff. To reset that project, because it's not just, just overseeing it, it's...
Not being there.
They have a question, hey, where is this going to go, where can I do this, how can I do that? And someone from the town has to be there to represent and say, yes, you can run that wire up through this chase way, no, you can't. And then, you know, constantly looking at, okay, yes, they're doing the work, it's moving forward appropriately. So just so the board understands, that will definitely be a busy couple of weeks for that.
All right, sounds good.
But that doesn't have to be Tom, just signs up. That's the answer. Yeah, it's too much of a... I get nothing to do, I'll be like a sick kid.
Yeah.
All season will be on it.
Yeah, like, it's just to understand the little things that come off as a major project like that goes in, because they're going to need access to everyone in the building. They're going to be, you know, replacing all the heat detectors on the upstairs, they're going to be running the wire places. You know, there's deficiencies right now, there's possible detectors in the hallway out here right now, those are going to need to be run. So it'll be a constant.
Do you find the job description or the description responsibilities that kind of, I'll be sure to play... Do you find the, um, job description or the description responsibilities that can, together, I'll be sure to play it to you.
Direct.
Um, and it, and it, I kinda see it can change, because, um, some of these things, and I already had a conversation, and I think we're still waiting on a proposal from Pete Gagman about maintaining the heating system. I just got a call today to that. Um, and then the, the other project is the generator, the tunnel generator, um, had a conversation with John, he's got a couple of, um, proposals that he's gonna put together. And I spoke tomorrow and already elected, um, so I think it's really just kind of planning oversight on the projects. I mean, I think those are probably the most important things, and then just generally building evaluation. We'll, we'll try to do a better job, maybe we can work together and put together a plan that makes sense. Is that sound good?
Yep. Awesome, so Pete Gagman, who's the owner?
Um, so I think it was quite a couple of weeks since basically Mike was supposed to have that to us. Um, I need to probably pull that a call. Unless Sean wants to do it, I can do it though.
I, I can call him, I can, and follow up, I know he gave me all of the numbers, so I, I know that.
He gave you the, the whole contractor?
Not, yeah, actual contract, he, he walked through all of the different, you know, it's three hundred and fifty for best piece, it's, you know, and he was writing that all up and, and then also what the town would get. So, um, you know, originally, so it's, it's almost like a warranty, right? With the exception that as part of that warranty, your yearly cleaning is included in it. So, you know, the, the benefit that the town gets, even if nothing breaks, is, is they can all, they service all of the equipment, they make sure that, you know, it's working at peak performance. And then, you know, if something breaks, they fix it. There are components that are not included in that, so it's not, uh, if the entire furnace blows up, it's replaced, it's the individual components, if they break. Those are covered under that service plan. But, you know, if the furnace, you know, with the exception of everything's new right now and have a warranty except highway. It's more of a, you know, this igniter goes, this, the small pieces, general maintenance.
Is that be, how do you find me being involved with this particular proposal?
Um, well.
They, they included your appointment.
They did.
Okay, well, we're having to clean tomorrow, so we, we hadn't been scheduled, you know, we hadn't, I scheduled that they're gonna do tomorrow. That, that ain't gonna affect the proposal, they'll know what's the machine, it's, it's all about after you clean it, that would suit.
It's a surface project for our heating systems, um, not just to involve.
So they're gonna have to clean it to get, to know it anyway, so they'll have to, oh, they clean by the point.
They actually.
I think we should break out though.
Wouldn't, we, we went in last year, swapped the, um, propane tank, they went in and reported all of the information on it.
Reported it, okay, it needs, it needs to be, I want it serviced though.
Yep, everything should be serviced once a year.
So they're doing that to most of it.
The, the one that they were not going to include is the one in the, there are the two up in the shacks.
Right, and that's understandable.
It's, it's a throwaway heater.
Um, so were Tom and I, we, you know, to send him what we have so far?
That's alright.
Um, I'll, I'll ask Tom, I, I'll meet, meet him in the, to send him what we have so far. And then perhaps in the next meeting, we can talk about what makes sense and what we're willing to do, and anything.
If you have any suggestions in the end, can send it to us.
Okay.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So there's, and so we made something up, it's gonna be. Services?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I wanna, you take the lead on how they were talking to Alan.
Um, so we received an email, just forwarded, um, the eleven, um, uh, the eleven, great. Um, so they have availability on the eleven for, um, Mike and I, and, and we're going to come in and meet with us.
Okay.
And.
What's on your twelve?
Oh, actually, the eleven is a holiday, which is another problem, um, so I'll, I'll see if we can do the twelve. Do we want to, um, we select Monday, Monday to Tuesday, since Monday is a holiday?
I'm okay with that.
As long as the calendar is free, I need to know.
Yeah. I, I'm pretty sure I've got enough. That Tuesday?
Wow, it's October. October, uh, it is free, so October twelfth, you know, but I'll see if you can schedule it for the twelfth.
Yeah, I think he said, going back, I remember, I think I do notice it was, that whole, this way.
That, that, that whole week therefore, good.
So that, that's to evaluate, we can possibly turn in some services, um, and also participate through a creative process, yeah. I saw.
Yeah, I just wanna note that. We've gotten some feedback, um, we understand that common residents could be suffering with a lot of town administrative deal, have daily conversations with, so it's gonna, it is gonna be addressed in some case. It's not like the decision's gonna go. It's gonna be avoided for.
Chuck, Chuck, Chuck has to ask.
What do we do when Chuck's on the day?
That's, I already asked the question about, um, gaps, and the only, um, gap you mentioned, which I'm willing to sign up for since I have some background in healthcare. Um, so somebody needs to take the phone for, 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 for piece of welfare.
Tolls?
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, what other gaps do you, I mean, we can.
He didn't have any other gaps, um, I think I included your email, but I'll just.
Okay. Oh, you did, I saw you.
Um, so he said figure was all handled, and, um, his only real concern was. Um, so he said everything was covered, the only concern he had was that we had coverage for welfare residences.
I wanna reach out to, I wanna reach out to someone too.
And, um. I'm gonna keep those, and that, that, we're gonna just take the phone.
Well, you got experience to work, so. Um, when I get Chuck calling one, I'll see if, just, anyone else, yeah, see if it's, you sure that, you know. You got welfare, Kevin will take it, but it was, it was an asset, and you think you may be missing on anything else, we. All right.
Um, he didn't, he didn't send that, um, who were you, were using that, I think that's the only gap, well, he's gone.
Okay.
Um, so we agreed to him with a meeting to October twelfth, oh, I need to give him the meeting dates for that week, um, for the end of the week. Um, I think that's the only one word I would need, um, while he's gone. So he's gonna make sure that he's up to date, or by the end of this week. Alright, and.
We probably have a few touches right now. Alright, so.
Like, the only issue I have, um, is if there's an issue during the day, um.
What do you call it, um?
Well, there, there's a phone, so there's.
Voice panel?
Um, it's a cell phone that you have to, I don't really think they're direct, well, calls to that. This is the only, the limitation I have is I do, so, and we have to be, you know, if I have to communicate with somebody, I have to apologize.
So, that being said, you take the lead, and I don't wanna speak to Jack, but if there's a motion, you can come in.
I can.
You wanna let it ride, yeah, come in, I'll get it.
I'll commit, but the only thing is I don't know much, that's.
Yeah.
But I can listen.
Yeah, I can get paid for that.
Right.
You can application. I think there'd be real only, the big concern is obviously electricity disconnects, which this time of year isn't as critical, um, and, um, homeless.
House movements.
Yeah, displaced people.
If he has anything he wants to talk to me, I'll have a call.
And we also have the reactionism, um, as a resource, so if, you know, we can always direct them to, and a lot of times they, like, a lot of those things are out there. But, um, I wonder what else, I'll, I'll probably just get an email, um, and get Chuck to put together a mail for contact information, um, and, and.
I can, I can do that personally. Alright, so now we're gonna come up with a phone budget, so.
Yes, um, okay.
So.
Right, so, um, so. So, um, I mean, kind of recommend since highway and SIP are, um, scheduled to be presented this week as a minimum, um, we should try to get through that first.
Okay.
And I, and in the past, um, we have, I haven't always, we haven't always had the very, very fine in the budget, um, during presentations, but sometimes if I'm a little grabs, um, so we may have to, you know, but I think we get to this moment, and I should make that, I'm sorry.
So we gotta, we'll have George, now come on, if I do look first.
I'll, I'll use the, all this time, actually. Oh, thank you.
That's the other one, conservation, so that's probably just the side of the situation.
This is the town hall. Okay, so this is, Sean, this is the town hall, um, security system?
The longer one, is the town hall security system, I also mailed it to you, I gave you a hard copy, so you hope. So I mailed it to the select board app.
Okay.
Okay. I made the transfer.
Oh, we're gonna, so, that's the, um, town hall, um, fire alarm that we need to use some.
Yep.
Um, Sean also gave us the proposal for the, and did you send us that email, Sean?
Yes, yep, to the select board now.
Um, for the security system, and this is security only, not in the phone for town hall. From Murphy's.
Yep.
But he sent it to our email as well, we don't need to make a decision on this, right?
Oh, you're right, we need to see what it is.
We don't, not over town hall security.
Is that the only one we have for?
Um, we had one from Accutown, put this phone and security, um, it's old, I think we just, we got it when, um, Dr. John was.
Yep.
Um, the chief and he worked with them that, I actually have a hard copy home that, um, John made, but we, we, we didn't call Accutown down in, um, for a proposal, and probably should, because we really felt, we're not that, we're not that confident, we have some discussion about the forums. So we want something higher?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Actually, um, do you wanna start with transportation, since that is probably short?
Sure.
Um, I think.
Any capacity travel?
Yep, yeah.
Um, although I think you're not presenting this week, that's.
Right, you know, Wednesday night, I have all, I can't present, I'm gonna get six per problem.
Okay.
You would second, you know, cable level maintenance?
Right, yes, um, there was a gap in the budget, and it's.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three?
I don't think, there is no line maintenance, is it?
Um, uh, no, there is, um, so. Preparers and maintenance transportation, um, no, did you see it? Oh, I sent it to you guys, I did send it to you guys, yeah. So, um, you had three thousand dollars last year, but there's nothing this year, actually, it's been negated, um.
Well, you got the lines going, huh?
Nope, it's still there.
No.
Yeah, not one ninety-three?
Ninety-three?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
It's under the general budget, so you're, oh, under the general budget, right, yeah.
And Bill has made one spare, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see, I don't see it, I don't see it on, actually, I think that's one that Caroline filled in.
Oh, okay.
So.
So you give up that three thousand? Huh? You giving up the three thousand?
No, no, it's, it's, that's, we headed to the shackle.
Okay. Yes, that was actually for the, uh, redo of the shack for the lower compactor. The, when you pull up, we have to throw your actual trash away, the left-hand compactor, that called the lower compactor.
Yeah.
The control room building, the floor of that, the, the subfloor, the steel, it's all rotted and coming back. And the building itself is not that great either, so I put three thousand in last year to redo that.
Okay.
I don't know whether we're gonna get to redoing it this year or not. So, I guess the best case scenario is move that money forward if we say, next year, if we don't use it this year.
Well, I, I think, um, well, you have, you actually have expenditures of already of eighteen hundred and eighty dollars.
Of that one?
Uh-huh, um, that's as of July thirty-first.
Oh, for the recycling building?
Yeah, with rain, finish, go back, finish raining, do the, do anything that's taken on that, probably.
Um, do you have, have any anticipated, um, expenses this year, Ed?
The only thing I had was to replace that shack, so.
Do you have an estimate on that?
Before everything went up, it was right around three thousand.
Forty-four hundred.
Probably thirty-five to four now. What I done, you're gonna come up with a price, was I got ahold of ours, shake on me, told them this is the size I want, and they go to be two thousand dollars for it. I bumped it up a little bit to three, just for, unanticipated, I haven't been in the number that was last year. So, the thought was we were gonna build it ourselves anyway, and I know if we built it ourselves, we'd build it a lot cheaper than the two. Now, the way prices are, we probably would take the two, just did labor to do it, but.
Oh, well, I, I propose I really put the money back, um, just because there's something that I'll.
Yeah, so we must have used some of that money for the, uh, the finish up, the recycling building that we built over the last couple of years.
Alright, um, so, let's see, everything's, um, the transfer station. Um, so, one of the things that, um, that you had requested was some salary increases for the transfer station tenants, and I know you provided some, um, local market data on that. I mean, I agree, um, that, what are they, thirteen dollars now, roughly, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so I also talked to the town suburb, the town borough, to tell them what your names, borough was fourteen, suburb was eighteen. They're both larger communities, but, um, there's quite a variation there. I think, and then, and then, did you guys get a chance to look at the market data?
I had some, yeah. I, I don't know, what I wanna say is payroll is, I think we should support. I don't know if there's a way, or if there's a other way, or increase, you know?
Let me ask, what? If you had to give something up?
Yeah.
I mean, if you can't do it all, you had to give something up?
That, that's understandable, I, I started with payroll issue.
Why don't you tell me what you'd give up?
On the transfer side? Something to give up, it's all...
I'm not, I'm not talking in general, I'm just talking in general.
So, I mean, I agree we're gonna support, I mean, I can't speak for these two, but I'd like to support your raises for sure, for two employees there.
And that survey I did was done last year, so...
Yeah, I know, so, I mean, I don't, I don't...
This is a stat.
And McDonald's is like sixteen, seventeen dollars, something like that.
Um, well, I need to say no offense, but, I mean, secretaries may be, and they're not dealing with people's cash. Well, in some ways you're, right? So, you know, I think because we have some wage data, um, I'm not adverse to it. I don't know that, to go from thirteen to sixteen is pretty significant. I think we need to find somewhere to meet the middle on that.
Can I?
Sure.
I would like to see the guys over there at the lowest pay of the highway line, the least, at the least the lowest pay of the highway line. Because those guys work both ways.
How much is it?
Well, right now it's fourteen something, which is not, you know, but I'm saying if we bring the highway department pay up, like we talk, pay, you know, have a schedule of what the pay should be, with what they do. I think, we use guys from the transfer station to work with us, and their judgment pays from one section to another section when they're doing these jobs. That, that pay should not change, that pay should be one salary.
So you're proposing like, so Gary's working for you, for example, which I think I saw him out on the...
Gary works with us quite a lot better.
That he should have the same hourly rate whether he's working for you or working for them?
I, I agree.
That would make it simpler, if you want.
But I think it's logical. You know, I mean, it's crazy to have these guys, oh, we're making too much, well, I'm gonna work at the highway department today, you know?
That's exactly it.
Um, do you have job descriptions?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I saw the equipment labor one, we talked about that.
Yeah, I think I dipped in between when you came in, but I couldn't easily send them again.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's my thoughts, I mean, and I believe he's on the same page.
Oh, yeah, no, I think that's...
Yeah, I totally agree.
Because they, you know, they pl- they come in a plow before opening at the transfer station, so they're doing literally what we do. You know, they come out and help us out, clean up, and they'll haul snow for us when we're hauling snow, you know, we're using these people for multi-functures. To have them pay one fat salary here and another salary there.
Actually, you're right, they, 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 where do I wanna work?
Yeah. You know, I mean, they don't necessarily have the option of where they wanna work, they're hired, you know, as transferred, but if we need someone, if someone is already on the books, they can rap, so...
Your phone's trouble down in St. John's, so I can't help you with that.
I think we need to look at taking pictures, like, those guys don't know how to run a road, probably applying and stuff like that, you know?
So what do you, what do you propose in this, your lowest?
I propose, I, I had that information, I don't, but, uh...
Well, I've got Gary, I've got my lowest paid guy over there at fifteen fifty.
I think that's where the start was gonna be, at the lowest price of the highway department. A big picture, I mean, there's things that we, I think salaries need to be brought up, we can give other stuff up, we've already given other stuff up.
But you could give something up in the highway to take care of that, with the good of people.
What's that? Ed would like to have, you know, he agrees with you, we're all one department.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I mean, unfortunately, the pays are in separate departments, but...
If I could give something up on highway, on transfer station, I would, my problem is I'm gonna not know. Everything I have, I have to pay to get rid of. So we watch the numbers really close, only send dumpsters off to be dumped when they're only full.
Yeah.
And if we pay the same amount...
You guys did a great job.
If we pay the same amount, uh, twenty, what is it, two, twenty-five to have them dumped, have them hauled, whether they're empty or full. So I'm not gonna send one out that's half-full, unless I'm trying to anticipate something, but, you know, so it's, we watch that really close. Try to get them packed as much as we can, we go with the backhoe, hound them down, make sure they stop.
So, actually, am I on the dot com sent on the rate, the wages? Cause you outlined the movement of each person, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm, we did post that, I did organize this, so that's what I said. So, okay, this was your wage survey that you gave us. So, we have Tonnent's Opelons at thirteen thirty-three, Barrington's fourteen sixteen, Selkirk's eighteen, and, um, Joseph Lamont, wage fifteen, Ray's sixteen, Broughton and Hancher's thirteen ninety-five, Chester's fourteen sixteen, Hennig's eighteen, Alton's fourteen. Um, so, there's a couple of thirteens, but not as low as our fifteen, right? But the average, so the average you came up with of that, um, data was fifteen twenty-five. And then, um, so we proposed...
My lowest, my lowest was fifteen fifty.
Yes.
There'll be two at fifteen fifty and one at sixteen fifty, and that's because of Simper.
So Paul Eames?
Yes.
Um, he's proposing we leave him from thirteen seventy-five to sixteen fifty an hour. He works twenty hours a week.
He does all the compactor, does all the plastic compacting, all the, all the aluminum bailing, so he does all that. And that's done on time when we're not open, let's say for that way, or in the scanner.
Um, so for Paul Martell, he's proposing we leave him from thirteen dollars an hour to fifteen fifty, and that's for seventeen hours a week. Gary Karen from thirteen hours, from thirteen dollars to fifteen seventy-nine, for seventeen hours a week. And then a new person, um, starting at fifteen fifty, six hours a week.
Times have changed.
Yeah, so, again, I don't, I know...
That gets us that, how we really work, probably is about people wise.
I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm just saying my opinion right now, I think the wages, it, it's a fairly good raise, but I don't think... It's a fairly good raise, but I think we're on fifteen, I'm okay with that, obviously. So, I'm okay with that, I, I, what I'd like to see is some of it off some, if you guys can. I'm not saying all, I'm thinking seventy, something like that.
So the proposed impact of that, though, was an additional eighteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars on the budget?
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like to see maybe somehow we can use it back, but, but we've still gotta go to the...
Um, so... So, um... Thoughts about this proposal in general?
So, as far as the transfer station, I'm...
So, um, so for this, um...
No good, can you continue with that?
No, I'm just thinking, so, um, so Paul is kind of the lead guy, right, Paul is...
Well, if I need a loan, there's probably also, and, uh, he, he always jumped in and come in bail whenever, you know? He'd run, you know, he runs the bailers, they give all the bailing and stuff like that, make sure that everything's sorted right and all, you know? I'm saying, yeah, the guy's seen is good, but, you know, they, they all have their functions.
He's taken a little liking to doing that, that he doesn't have to worry about, you know, telling him, hey, that's getting fully done, he just does it. Watches it, and does it, so...
If he left, what would foster a place?
Well, at least that.
In today's world?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if he'd get anything.
Well, we get somebody who's...
Get somebody, yeah.
Um, the only thing I have, one issue that probably changes, the new person, um, I might start them at fifteen, just because they...
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Um, and then the other things I wanna, um, request is that we make sure, before we sign off on these, we have job descriptions, um, and, I'm gonna make even harder requests, a very basic performance review. Um, and so you probably, since you are selecting another panel, you probably have seen some, you might model it after?
I'll probably put my hands on it, though.
Okay, great, so, I'm okay with it?
Out of those, out of those, you don't need to go to commission, but just, so, I, I think that's very good, okay?
I, I, I think someone, they shouldn't come in at the starting pay anyway, a new person, I think they should be at the period of, you know?
Yeah, you could, yeah, this six-month trial.
Yeah, probation every period.
Probation for check, right, I haven't done, probably to get up the way of legal thing. I never liked it when I was being paid, um, paid a price, and the new guy off the street didn't make the same kind of money as me, doing less work.
So, um, so you, you guys have until the end of the year, um, to come up with your job description and all that stuff, so you get some time, you got...
I'm working online, you got three or four minor rates?
I did, yeah.
I think I've actually got, see, the three or four job descriptions that are breaks down to what you guys do.
You know, you might be able to help him.
He does all it every day.
No, I mean, from that point, if, if you come from that background, and you can get access and stuff like that...
He's helped me track right along, he's been right-hand man.
Well, you can probably set that up.
Um, so we wanna make a motion, I can, I can say a motion if you want, um, please. Um, so I'll make a motion to accept, um, the proposed salary increases for the transfer station, with the exception, and we'll put this in the minutes, I'll make, um, so you have it under two. Okay. With the exception of the Saturday person, who started fifteen dollars an hour, and, um, this is continued on, um, the department's providing job description and a, and a basic performance review, by the time we make the salary change.
And what is, I mean, salary changes, um, in front of the cloud, it's clear or is it first?
It's, so can you...
You start in January, you vote in March.
We get ready.
Okay, that's fine.
Any second?
Second. All available, aye, aye.
Great, great, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So it's, I think, I think that was the only other thing, that's budget.
Everything else online, I think, was, I didn't have any other instructions.
Back, more, you know, forward.
Okay, so, um, since, so I, I'm the keeper of the budget for chief now, I'll make, uh, with her do the math and make the adjustment, to the full budget before Wednesday, or by Wednesday, okay? I think that was a transfer.
Does the budget, does the budget, you didn't want to?
I, I proposed to one.
Okay, that's what I, I wanna make sure, one night, so, split right between the two.
Well, so we...
You covered three things.
Yeah, they're supposed to do transfer, highway and SIP on Wednesday, but I can't make it, we, which we can, we can still go over it, um, which is if there were any questions you would be there for.
Right, right, if they wanna send me the questions, it'd be, if they wanna go over it, that'd be great, if you're done, they can send me the questions. Where I am a Sligo man in another town, Wednesday, I just, my Sligo is a... And we didn't have one last week, so I'm gonna do that.
Well, we'll make sure that someone can cover the questions and the information we talked about tonight.
Okay, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, why was I thinking that?
George, George has everything on it too, so...
We need to have a figure, we need to figure that out, so... So, I feel like we should probably try to get through, um...
Highway.
Why don't we, why don't we try to do, maybe like a hard stop, um, on budgets by eight thirty, and then finish up with the board appointments, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it does.
Is that okay?
Yes.
And then we'll continue.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. Six, Friday morning. And that, that only is something that, well, it's something that we didn't get through all of this. This is a possibility, you won't, um, if we don't, um, maybe a brief... Signals, um... But we'll, we'll do it.
No, no, I think tomorrow.
Alright, so we're good, so let's talk about the highway. So, highway... Uh, so, highway... So, um, so, um, George?
Yes?
Yeah.
Let's do the easy ones first.
Okay.
Um, the equipment rental, what was the equipment rental for?
It's a small, uh, many-escalated, do shoulder work and stuff.
Um, line one eighty-eight? Oh, okay, I, I think it was just unclear to me what we were rental, um, did we rent from them before?
We rented, this year we did not rent any, we, uh, the last couple of years we rented, uh, equipment and... It's a do shoulder work and stuff.
Do you have a plan, um, for that?
Well, depending on roads we do, uh, we need to stack boom on some of the shoulder work on, on some of these roads to have them... And I know we've done a little bit on Paul's Road, uh, I mean, on Olden, Old Mill, um, we stacked, we're gonna stack cleaning up the shoulders on Bayroads and stuff. All these roads have some of the edges, you should clear them up, so the water flows free, just from, all your leaves, everything that's there. So, that's, you know, it needs, they need to be done, so we need to be, you know, if you keep somebody doing that, you know, driving a truck and hauling that stuff out, that's what we need to try to get done inside that road progress. You know, like, again, it's, uh, depending what you do for rose mature and stuff like that, so... I mean, we got the shoulders, they should be cleaned up on Jesse Go and stuff, that's all, you know, even, even the smaller, that have shoulder, you know, that have dish work, it needs to be cleaned up.
Alright, um, any, any issues with that, um, proposal, Paul gonna reject?
No.
Again, that, you know, it may not happen, it's, and it, it's, we put five thousand in there, if, you know, we may use it for a few weeks to get something done, it will be maybe a thousand, a thousand, a thousand, but, last time we went over, we spent up to six thousand and twenty-eight doing shoulders, because we did the whole thing to Sligo.
So do you think, I mean, that you're working out, if you'd be doing that, a lot of that next year?
Doing some, I don't know how much, you know, I, again, I don't know much time to let it allow us to do that, you know?
Typically try to do it, probably as a pavement rubber, you know, they get it all down, down where you can then, from then...
If we get time to do shoulder work after roads, then we do other roads that are not being paid, you know, they need to be, shoulders need to be taken care of. You know, the shoulders and your, and your, and your ditch lines, the water, you gotta, please, you know, we don't want people having water problems in their crops. And eventually that's gonna catch up with us. I mean, we did, we got a good jump on, you know, like I said, Sligo Road's done, maybe for a couple of years, but this is stuff you, it has to revisit every so often, and, you know, it's, we should be maintaining that, you know, before water... I mean, we did, we got a good jump on, you know, like I said, Sligo Road's done, maybe for a couple of years, but it's just stuff it has to revisit every so often and, you know, it's, we should be maintaining that, you know, before water, for...
It's great the vegetation's grown up in there. You can't just go in and re-wrack it, you need to get it out by the roots. And then put refract in or ground or elsewhere, in stone or whatever. Healthy roads.
But I, I have to ask, could we just talk about the highway plan first?
We can.
I mean, because that gives us a bigger, broader picture as we look at this.
We haven't, it's not been one, talked about highway plan for a long time, you can't, there's...
I, I just wanna, what our priorities are, let's...
I agree with you.
Well, it's in the email, I don't look forward to it yet, um, but can you tell what the roads are?
Oh, the next year?
What the proposed roads that we're gonna handle this year are.
This coming year. I think we might have paid. Jesse Doe is number, number one, should be done next year. That's the first one I, my thoughts are, that I was thinking of doing. Because of the condition that it is between the mills, and I don't know what the situation is, if who owns the roads down there, I believe it's the town road, it goes into, to the water, so it's treatment, but that is all broken up. And that's another thought we're gonna, you know, that's gonna be looked at because plowing and stuff, we're hitting the manholes, we're doing it, and the road's breaking up significantly in certain ways, so. It's not a big road, it should be grounded, paved.
The road going to Mill, what's that? Is that the road?
Is that the road?
I think so.
Where, where does it go?
Mill Road, I don't know.
Right down to the, uh, Sioux.
What is the name of the road between the mills?
Lower Mill.
You can call it Lower Mill.
Oh, yeah, I know, that's the back road.
The Lower Mill Road.
Yeah, Lower Mill Road, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I know, where it is now.
Yeah. Then, uh, we talked about the end of...
Has that been paid before?
When they put it in, yeah, I thought, I don't know. But, uh, there's also, we talked about process, we're grinding part of the Harris Drive in the back loop out of apartments, and then paint overlaying the rest of the, you know, so... And Starfield Circle, milling and overlaying that, it, you know, it depends what we get for money, of course. But, uh, we're also, I don't know if the process is, we're trying to redo all your roads because we're doing...
Um, I think that will, that plan will come before, is that, I don't think it will come... No, not, not, we're just planning process anyways.
That, and I mean, there's, you need, you guys need, you know, come out and get the roads, and see, and just put those roads out there. I mean, Starfield Circle's been talked about, and the Harris Drive's been talked about before. It's probably, you know, if we get money to overlay them and get them fixed, you know, and get these storm drains and stuff adjusted, I, I think that would be a good idea, but we definitely gotta concentrate on Jesse Doe first.
Um, and then the other one I mentioned is Pine Street, which is probably...
Pine Street, which, probably we would do overlay and, yeah, shim and overlay over there. That, where they're right in the area, you can always get a better deal when they approach by two, so.
So...
But I don't know how much money we're gonna have and what's gonna cost, but we, so...
So, one of, one of the things I...
So, we don't have an estimate on the cost at all?
I've got an estimate for Jesse Doe, I think it's one thirty-five, and that whole road, I don't know exactly, I don't think that would be right now, but of course, that's last year's prices. Oh, it's really a issue, yeah.
Um, so one of the other things is...
So, how do we look at that? Do we look at it as operating budget, or look at it as capital?
Capital.
Capital?
No, this is now in the operating budget.
But there's, so there's money in capital as well, and this was a conversation, what was your best the other day? Is why, I mean, because our roads are really, um, important, why are we not considering excess capital money for...
To go in and out?
For doing roads, and also, like, when we're thinking about important projects, how do they achieve priority over our roads? Because we're spending a lot of money on capital, but we're not on roads.
Right, and roads don't show. Definitely some of our roads don't show, right? You know, and I know, I don't really like on the road. Some people, uh, they're not good buying, taking a ton of money to do roads, but, you know, yeah.
Right, um...
Because at, 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 what if, when, if people are proposing the budgetary items for roads, at the three fifty, it, of course, last year was cut down to two fifty-five, you're never gonna get caught up. Roads, you know, paving roads, that's a hundred thousand dollars roughly going, just going, uh, on a road.
Thank you.
Is that what you thought?
About eighty-five to, to pay, but, you know, you pay, I'm just using a rough number, but, you know, that's not a big road.
We almost do it a hundred thousand a mile.
Right.
That's, that's...
Is that, is that, is that the, the hundred thousand?
That's pretty close.
Pretty close to that.
But that's shim and overlay, that's not a reconstruction.
Right.
Uh, Sligo Road was a reconstruction, that was all ground redon right from the base up. The Kool-Aid's a hot pot.
How much, uh...
Yeah, well, that was three years.
That was done over...
Three years?
Two years. Done over two years.
No, we didn't.
How much per mile?
The overlay was a dirty one.
I don't know what that one was a mile, that was probably, what do we pay down there this year just to get the overlay done? One forty?
Yeah, we'd say one thirty.
Yeah, so we probably got two forty...
And I get much.
Yeah, you probably got close to three hundred in that entire road.
Easy.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we paid one hundred and eleven on the wood grunt.
Yeah.
And that developed, based on the overlay.
Yep.
So...
So, how much traffic do we get from Mill, from Mill Road?
That's the other, that's the other concern. Now, I'm getting, I'm getting calls from, uh, emails from the owner of the mills, uh, you know, there's sections of that road that don't need it. The road's in very rush shape, it's, you know, however, the only traffic that we give them is the library and, sure, pretty, you know, the, the service treatment. So, as far as traffic come, you know, there's, there's no traffic coming there. We've got a section, I got a price to do that section that's broke up, uh, so before winter, because it's gonna wash the rest of the road. Uh, I didn't wanna turn that in tonight till we find, get the final bill for, you know, funding, so we can see what our plan dollars are, we get some extra money, I've got a couple of station projects that are going, I told you about that.
Could you just patch that?
Right, that's what I was wondering, could we do a decent job patching it? And allocate that money to a more highly traveled road?
We could probably have, just do a shim coat over it. You know, when they're here to do Jesse Doe, just have them run a shim coat over that road, and, you know, get it...
Yeah, you gotta ask them.
Well, I, I can have, I wanna know what you guys want before I go out, have, come and give us estimates.
I mean, if it's a road that's not used or...
I, I agree with you.
I mean, you gotta look at it and say, there's other priorities.
I agree.
So, part of the conversation is, so, like, doing back there, you just, dude, I want to say achieved, but unexpected, in terms of, Alan type job. Aesthetics, it looks nice and should hold up, but obviously Jesse Doe, you're gonna do the whole...
Jesse Doe, the, the, you get built, because when Jesse Doe was built originally, they used the materials that was on the property. They didn't put no gravel over the base and, you know, they didn't build the roads like every other development here.
And then, then it's gonna, then it's gonna problem.
And it's complicated.
So...
I mean, we could do it, but, you know, just have them go in there and shim that road, bring it back to, so it's passable, buy a few years, whatever the heck there is on that, I mean, it's not a lot of traffic. You know, if everybody put in this and that, but...
On Mill, on Mill.
Yeah, we'd send them digging it all up and doing it that way, I mean, you're gonna have to adjust some of the annual because they're out of rack to the road.
Yeah, but that, that, doesn't that make logical sense?
Oh, I, I agree. I agree.
Yeah, but it doesn't get traveled a lot.
There's a lot more roads.
All you have is the library and...
That, but, uh, you know, I mean, there's oil apartments there, but that should be up to the mill.
Yeah, but they park under the apartment building there too.
Right.
Under the front street apartment, there's parking beneath there, so.
You know, I, I mean, there's not even a fine line of what, who owns where, that's the problem there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know how close the buildings you blanked it, I don't know.
So, how, how do you do it then?
I just, maintaining in the center of the road that we plow it.
Yeah, I mean, you have to survey them?
I don't know how they, how they would come up to get, bring that in.
They'd go to deeds and, yeah, basically survey.
No. It could be a surprise that they own the by the mill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually, what's...
Hey, should we have somebody look at that?
I was thinking...
I would think that's probably not a valid, I don't know.
So, before we, before we add priorities, probably call upstairs in the plants.
You know, I mean, they have to have an access road to the treatment plant, but, you know, who owns that access road to the treatment plant, does it count? You know, that's probably something worth looking at, you put...
Should we list the questions together on that?
I can.
I mean, just, it's simple. Should we have a survey, look at it?
It may not be a bad idea, I mean, to find out exactly who owns the property, I mean, you could, there's no fine lines, I mean, other than they ran through lanes of pavement down the center. Like all the garages, everything else attached, just with the walkways. It's, it's hard to tell.
Was, was the, was the apartment buildings on Front Street built the same time as the mills? And were they connecting properties? Uh, yeah, it's, it's a very good question.
So, if we were to prioritize the mill, would we just fire up what it produces? No. I would take that off the priority list for now.
Oh, my God, I, you know, I mean, if I was a, a major, a road that needs major work, that is the number one road, but, I mean, there is other roads, I have Starfield Circle, you know, and, uh, the Harris, and all kinds of roads that count to be worked.
Starfield's like residential.
Water used to plant.
Yeah, that's all, the Harris, all, and that one there, I was talking with Chris, who fight the, I said, from that, we're building, uh, rocks now, three, three way. And going to mill that instead of completely grinding it up, so they don't have to change the curvings, they can build it down to save the, you know...
They can save the curve they already have on that, the sidewalks.
That's right. But there's painted curving along that, so if we round it all up, then they'd have to replace all that, which we don't have to do. We can take a mill off an inch or two and put a new layer on the car, we can salvage it that way.
What do you think we'll move forward with the highway budget, what we propose on the third quarter, or...
Well, I...
Uh, let, let me, let me know, don't even, yeah, you can, you know, I asked you, what would you take out?
Cold patch it.
There's only twenty-five hundred dollars to match.
George, I mean, what do you think about that?
No, we, we could take some out of our equipment fund.
Well, you, you want some update on tree maintenance, because we haven't expended any of that.
Tree maintenance?
Yeah.
Oh, you can't, there's too many trees that tied.
Oh, we haven't expended anything yet?
Uh, we have the P O to spend it all.
Okay, all right, good.
But they can't do it until last week in December, first week in January, so it's...
Why not?
Probably a tree company.
I mean, I don't, I'm just asking.
George, you ever talk...
I've been waiting three months to get calls for people.
George, you ever talk to Nick at all?
Not yet on that, I, I'm, no, but we still have plenty of trees.
No, I'm sure you do.
I'm gonna talk on that one before.
Nick is a guy who does all the kind of, I'm scheduled all the time.
Oh, true.
I, I think that's...
I, I use urban all that, I submit in the meeting and stuff, but I, I called Birch, no response, I called a couple of other tree companies, no response, because they still have a...
Did you try DB Tree in South, or DB Tree in South Bend? Um, the other, a, a local company out of South Bend as well.
No, I didn't, I didn't know anything about it.
Do we have, do we have an estimate? Do we have an estimate?
Yes.
Okay. We signed it, but it's for the full amount.
I mean, yeah, we gotta be all, to do all the tree work a week.
So, let's go through those items, so you take, how much out of equipment?
Why don't you, I hate to take any out of equipment.
Everybody likes to take...
Those got followed. I'm gonna just give the date, we'll spend this year.
One sales.
I think we're raising it?
Yeah.
Oh, five thousand?
I think we've spent forty-four hundred out of it.
Okay.
Fifty-six hundred left.
Oh, there's ten thousand?
So, you have ten thousand.
Okay, if I'm looking, uh, actually, there's fifty-two hundred taken out of it, so, I don't know.
What is that for, equipmentally, George?
It's, uh, we can't tools out of yellow and, probably, probably over last week.
So, it looks like we're...
Street sweeping, we could probably cut a couple thousand out of. Uh, I'd give it a thousand dollars a sweep this year. We're getting a new sweeper on a, I mean, not that I wanna sweep, we can't sweep all the streets with that new room we got, but we could eliminate some of the...
Yeah.
Some of it, uh...
So, equipment, looks like you're only about half expended there, um, to date.
I'm talking one fifty-nine.
Um, one eighty-seven.
I'm sorry, I can't see the number, I need to... One twenty-nine vehicle maintenance, vehicle repair maintenance.
Oh, so...
You say it's twenty grand?
That one is going up.
Is it?
Yeah, that, that's not...
That budget, that budget was totally spent before, and the budget was even passed, this past year, that's one that...
And it's gonna get a hit again as soon as I get my notice, for the, for the inspections. Yeah, you could say, two, you have, three out of equipment, probably fifteen out of sweeping. Uh, and you feel that?
Okay, we have, should not really, should not spend it there, well, this is as implied on the first two.
Well, street sweeping, not good yet, so that, you know, you could pull that out.
What was the P O that was just signed for tree maintenance, thirty-five million or five million? The one you haven't, you said we got, we'll say it?
That's what I told, was we already used some, some, some grinding.
So, I guess the question is, do we feel comfortable adding ninety-five thousand dollars to our road budget without really having any estimates and knowing a firm plan?
Well, no. That's what I was suggesting.
Like I, like I said earlier, we could leave the two fifty-five in there this year, get Jesse Doe done, and we could probably get those other two roads over there.
Um, what, what about Kellin, because Kellin is, that's atrocious over there.
That backside, the backside of Kellin Park is...
Fourth path.
It's, we only own part of that.
Right.
We did a section of it already. When they decide, some of it may do theirs next year, but again, that one there's gonna be left. The best time to do it is when someone's gonna come in and then do the job, August.
They're gonna do it next year.
Well...
Let's do this in the last year.
Last year, if you have a four.
Yeah.
You know, it's, uh, that's one that we need to have.
Can we do joint projects?
Well, go and drive in.
I mean, they don't do it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I told them to keep us on the radar.
So, we could, so we could change this down?
What, two fifty-five? I will not go down at all on road money.
What if they compromise and went to two seventy-five, which potentially will get us Jesse Doe, I, I mean, and we may not get all of it, but, well, we set a priority on some of these.
Two thousand, and then that takes care of the payroll problems too. And I was, it's the whole big picture, but it takes care of, you know, the money we approved for the, and then by reducing twenty million in time, and, you know, so it's sort of making up a new budget for the fifteen, you know, just approved for, for later. Transfer, you're saying?
Oh.
So, yeah, I think two seventy-five is a number that was trying to work out.
And like I said, the two fifty-five, we got quarter of it done this year.
Or two seventy-nine.
I really think we need to have a conversation about excess funds and C I P too, um, as part of the plan, because road resurfacing was part of C I P before, and then they moved it into here.
So, is there money sitting there?
There was excess money in contingency, um, the number of Joe's emails, I think I sent it to everyone.
Yeah, I'm sure you did, because, but, you know, they had dated, you know, the last month, what, when was that? That was, uh, two years ago, and it's gonna get out.
I met with, um, last week, last week, I think it was, we could certainly invite Joe, and I think, I think part of the issue is, is there's only a nine item SIP. So, we would need to think about putting behind that money back to C I P for earlier. So, we would have the ability to use excess funds out of there.
Yes.
Or, and, and it becomes a priority evaluation of, are we have this much money to use, what's more important?
Yes, I think...
This or this?
I, I think, I think that's the way it should go, instead of, and it's nothing personal, this highway, some money we put away for holiday, for maintenance, but the main part of the town, town, and going forward, you might get, so, length of like, maybe not for keeping twenty, twenty-two, but twenty-three on, on the, that's the way you go.
I think we really want to think about this, about how to...
I know, I agree with you, so, so let's do a review of that, but let's make this two seventy-nine.
Okay, I'm, I'm finding it.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be presented for the budget on, on Wednesday, so that's what we'll present, two seventy-nine, I can add, full patching, and it's only twenty-five million. I don't really think it's...
I believe that.
So what about, so what about the.
Because you might wanna do something in the winter, right?
What about street sweeping? And, um, is there one?
Quarter?
Yeah, fifteen hundred, three thousand.
Forty-five, maybe. Doesn't it feel good to give? Forty-five plus the number.
Jack, I'm not gonna go there, but I've been here four years, and every year my budgets gave back more than this finished year.
That makes about twenty, I think, John. That feels great.
Ninety-seven thousand last year went back from my budget.
So quicker is five?
That's one of the biggest budgets.
And it's not gonna get smaller. The unfortunate part about our budget, it's always spending, it's never taking in.
I know.
Okay, so, um, so I'll make a motion that we modify the highway budget to change the road resurfacing and maintenance, um, appropriation to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Modify, modify the street sweeping line item to reflect fifteen hundred dollars and modify the equipment line to reflect five thousand dollars.
Yeah, what's equipment line numbers?
So I can tell you the line items.
So it's.
So road resurfacing is line one-ninety-nine. Oh, is it three?
Take three out.
Take three out, okay, so that leaves seven.
I know it's happening.
Do you want me to just go line by line, sorry?
Be better.
Okay, um, so, um, motion to modify line one-ninety-nine to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for road maintenance and resurfacing. Modify line one-ninety-five, street sweeping, to fifteen hundred dollars. Modify equipment line one-eight-seven to seven thousand dollars.
I'll pay them.
Fine. Um, are, on the salary storage, um, um, so.
I can make it very easy for you. Change my pay an hour later. Instead of an hourly rate. It'd be bad for me, it'd be bad for you guys.
So I'll say what I always say, the issue I have is, obviously, job descriptions, performance reviews, and marketing. Do you need marketing, supporting marketing? Because where do we where the numbers come from?
I talked to a few guys in different, my salary is about twenty-five dollars an hour, right now, right now. The way I take it, right. Most of the guys that do my job are not considered road agents, they're working for me, which is basically what I do, I'm making thirty-plus dollars an hour. So that's, it could help several guys in the area, and they're paid hours. So they get overtime for the hours they're here in excess of the, uh, their salary. So that's, yes, it's a significant increase, if you're looking at it that way. However, uh, or I'll give you fifty hours at my salary, and you guys pay me overtime after fifty. When it comes in the wintertime, when we're working crazy hours. But then, how you justify that, I mean, how you, you know, no one has to have.
So I, I think the hard part for me is that we're looking at eighteen thousand dollars in salary increases with no data available. Um, that, that's a hard part for me. You know, Ed was kind enough to do a little bit of research, I mean, phone calls, and we have a little bit of marketing data there, um.
Uh, I'll tell you right now, if a truck driver's out here in the area, we also, if another truck driver in here, we're making less than twenty bucks an hour. When you put an equipment operator on top of that, you're adding two dollars an hour. So, I mean, if you're looking at, you know, some of the data, that's. We did raise one, one position up to eighteen recently, and we don't leave that one alone, I mean, but, you know, we get guys that, the plow driver, they come in, work for us, they get twenty dollars an hour, because that's how they do it, so.
So, um, I'm gonna ask a hard question, do you know what each person is making an hour?
Do I know what each person is now?
I've been to yours.
Not exact.
Okay.
How many people?
Two men.
So you and two other people?
Me and Ed, John, people, I'm just, I'm just paying the rest of the state, we're doing it.
That's the highway staff?
So we're gonna do a high-staff activity?
Yep.
So you're not gonna take everybody?
No.
So we wanna. I hate to have fires.
Are you guys available tomorrow? All right, we'll stick around.
Yeah, we can go a little late.
So can I come back tomorrow night?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay, I'm taking in your questions, and I'm gonna go do some research. Okay, great, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, um, so can I?
Mike's not active.
Oh.
That came from Karen.
Okay, so you have Mike spinning?
Yeah, that, lights need to be adjusted on that one.
Yeah, I'll worry exactly for that.
So there's Mike Dyon?
Mike Dyon and Mike Dyon, Jim Truman are, and Paul Garret is real into it, yeah. And that's the plow driver, that's all he can do.
Um, so we have a job description for Mike Spinn.
Correct.
Do you have any other job descriptions?
And I, I thought I gave you one for.
Labor.
Labor.
That's the labor and equipment operator.
Yeah, I broke it down in four different ways, I, I thought I sent you, I thought exactly.
All right.
I think we've gotta find that, we send that out to your folks everywhere. I don't know whether you have injury deals anywhere.
So just, um, from my perspective, it's hard for me to make an eighteen thousand dollar commitment without any market data. But I think we need to find a compromise, um, to kind of move them towards, um, you know, what we think is probably market salaries. Do you guys have any thoughts about that, Mike?
I think, uh.
Well, they, the only thing that'll move would be his position. And he's transfer station manager, truck driver.
If I can add in, enact, and we're, we're losing our superintendent as a transfer station. We're looking to pay between twenty-two and twenty-three dollars an hour to replace him, but we also are making it a, like, facility manager, too. So the person that's gonna be responsible for fixing patches and holes in the walls, and, you know, uh, not so much lawn maintenance, but, you know, he's, oh, he's gonna be the one taking care of the buildings, so. So that's gonna be between twenty-two and twenty-three dollars an hour. We're looking to fill that fairly soon.
Um, so.
That's the only market data right now.
If you adjusted the other guys, like Gary, it's already adjusted, if this goes through. Uh, so that won't change on Gary, but.
Um, so. So I think what I'd like to propose, um, it's, I'm just gonna throw this out.
Cause I have half.
Well, I, I don't, you don't have any, like, we don't know what people are paid. Um, so I, I'd like to propose that we do an increase, um, to the line and get market data, so between now, well, we have your market data, we need to know what could be designed.
Three dollars a day, that's pretty serious.
It can't be between now and then, but we do an increase to the line, um, we plan to get market data, and we also plan to make sure that any job is described. And again, the basic philosophy, so what do you feel is, I feel we should pick a percentage of increase on that line.
That was gonna be fifty.
Fifty percent?
Well, fifty somewhere.
Oh.
Nine thousand.
A fifty percent increase?
Nine, no, nine thousand, instead of, you're gonna be like eighteen thousand, basically, total, so it's almost like somewhere around nine thousand.
Um, so we can, what we can do is budget a certain percentage, but the.
So we have another sweep at this after tomorrow, right?
We do.
Can I see the? Yeah, sure, I'm, sorry, well, it's okay, man.
So we should, we should budget a percentage of, on that line, of increase. With the expectation that we're gonna get market data and then make adjustments once we have more data.
Yeah, so what percentage do you wanna go up to, question right now?
So, let's see. So, so right now, um, we're talking, they're, so they're saying, George, your, your percentage is a twelve percent increase, the full-time staff is a thirteen percent increase, and the highway plowtime staff is a twenty-three percent increase.
That was, that was to get you hours, because we could have more use of more hours for you, so I, I don't know how you guys wanna do that. That, I'd like to get somebody with more hours on a, you know, with the staffing, so we use, we use these guys every day of the week, we don't have that, that ability to, that budget will not hold up for things, you know, I think, of all the time, because.
So are you looking to propose more full-time people?
Well, I, I, that was my proposal originally, is to get one more full-time person, and then have a, one plowtime person. You know, there's so many variables, uh, yeah, because Ed, you know, doing the transfer station work and stuff like that, and, you know, it's. I don't know how, how you guys want to do it, though.
Okay, um, so I think it's a hard ask, um, to ask the taxpayers to consider twelve and thirteen percent increases.
No, I agree. Oh, so you're looking at a percentage of, just a raised percentage, or was you doing like, instead of twelve percent, you're looking at like, four percent or three percent?
Right, um.
Well.
And that assumes that, you know, we collect market data, and we're moving towards market increases in that, in that percentage, and it's not just cost of living, um, but we actually evaluate where we are, how we compare to other towns.
So if we, we propose a five percent increase, cost of over. Market data, it's not, it's not gonna be a problem, so, we drive over from now and send them out.
Um, so, so if we said, for example, five percent increase on the line, so between now and the time raises can be distributed, we have market data, and then we decide, is it five percent? Or is it really two percent, that needs to bring, maybe bring up to market data.
Yep, I got you.
But at least we take a step forward, um, but we have to think about the town as well as the vehicles.
True. The answer is, if you guys market data sooner, it should be better.
So John Yaraskovich got a statewide salary, um, I think I should, but it's in the police.
Yes, I know, that's right.
And it's the whole state, troll, sergeant, everything, um, so that was really useful, let's try to decide what makes sense. I don't know if the state has that, but it might be worth phone call.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So I think.
So do you want, or wanna, do that tonight, and just give them a number, and then it's gonna be a little bit fictional until you actually do it, till it's finalized? Or just, you know, cause it's, well, actually, we shouldn't do it, because it's gonna really budget it, and they'll knock it out anyway.
Um, really, it's whatever, I mean, they have to take a selectable recommendation, um, maybe here, the, the recommendation of the highway, but, but really, it's a selectable recommendation, and I don't know what they should be considering. Um, so I would say you pick, um, I think I would be okay with five percent.
That's what I said, and I know you're looking for twelve and thirteen, and I was gonna normally raise, I, I mean, because of the circumstances, since they know that, to reduce a raise, it must be this group, but since the situation is, unless it's a five, at least they're five.
And it could be lower, if you come back and market data doesn't show five percent, I mean, it could be lower.
I don't think it will, no, you know, right, so we're gonna move forward with that, we're hoping we'll make it.
Definitely.
No, I, I don't wanna, as long as we can adjust it afterwards, once we get the data.
So do we wanna, but do we also, so the question is, do we really, do we wanna make this five percent potential, five percent market address, if we want to?
Yes. Yeah. I think so, I think so, but. I know it's a high percentage for pay, but I still believe that probably school law would pay our fees more initially, so.
Okay, um, so do you want to make a motion?
You make a motion to?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Can I make a motion, I'll say.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjust line one-seventy-seven, uh, road agent, um, to five percent. And I'll, I'll get the numbers, run the numbers together. And a motion to modify line one-seventy-eight full-time staff to a five percent increase. And line one-seventy-nine, um, to a five percent increase, um, with the contingency that we get market data, and we make adjustments based on that market data up to five percent. Um, we also have job descriptions and a basic philosophy.
Who's gonna do the basic philosophy?
The selectory.
Yeah.
Right.
We would have to have a meeting.
I'll second that. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It's been, it's been discussed, if you want, about job descriptions and, and actual reviews and stuff, and it's.
I've mentioned, I've mentioned in the past that they should be job descriptions.
You got the best guy in the world to help you.
Right, okay.
Your right hand.
All right, yeah.
But, you know, I mean, no one wanted to hear us about that stuff before, you know, it was just that way it was.
Well, and I think really what we're asking you is, even just put a word document together, what you're gonna have to do. And then, for you, put together a list of what you do, and then we'll refine it from there, and work with you on describing your job as well. That makes sense?
Yep, absolutely.
Great, I think, I think we're, I think that's it for highway.
Well, we have a fire.
Yep.
Thanks, yeah, I wish you had anything else for us.
Thank you.
Can I just, uh, push?
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
I will ask, um, I'll be a list of.
Sure, Ed, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this again, I know you hear a lot, but you, you guys, you guys up here are, you're fashionable, you're a good job, so. I'm sure you don't need to second that.
I've had, oh, it's good to hear, I pass it on, Jordan, we appreciate it, so.
They are free.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
What, we're gonna go turn. Well, hang out.
What's for you? Hey, you guys are hiring, that's nice.
Okay.
Five times what we.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it'll be kinda not fun.
I wanted to say, who knows the draw?
Cause he's like.
That's it? All right.
Depending on the weather, if the roads are wet, we're not doing.
It's raining, it was supposed to rain out, but.
But we'll see what happens, what happens.
Okay, so fire, um, I think, um, so Sean, thank you for putting together your PowerPoint, that was really helpful.
I updated it for tonight, so, um, I know we don't have it, but I can just walk through the verbal part of it.
Um, we couldn't actually, if we wanted to hook up, because what makes it hard, um.
Well, you wanna put it up on?
Something you are, you can just.
I'd like to see it, good.
Okay.
You know, like, why, you feel it good? The audio's much better, I, I.
Much better.
I'll just move. Now, it's moving.
Um, oh, I have a.
Recording in progress.
No, it's connection now.
You want to hear that?
No. We're just getting intermittent connection issues.
So you need to turn the system.
We need something to protect the engine.
Is it?
Yes. That would be one step. Wish you would, that'd be, that'd be, I'll do it next week. That would be a first step, it'd be one of the first slipboarders, you know, which is, you can figure it out.
How long have I been in?
Hold on, I see you, and you went down, you had to run out ten minutes, so.
That's not true.
I think that's when your budget, right?
That's when your budget can be, yeah, you, so you haven't been in there as a slipboard person?
Not.
Paul was actually, yeah, you got, you had your gear, and, with an air bottle on, you know, and so.
Yep. See, with my house in my car, I'd love to see you inside of a place. Yes.
Better get a house.
Guys, get ready, I'm gonna shut, like.
Um, sorry, we need to, I'm gonna catch up.
Keep your pattern.
No, no. Let's see if we can see it without, with the lights on for now.
Okay.
Um, just because in case we're gonna write notes.
All right, cause we won't be able to.
Easier for you to get over the, uh, so it's a surprise, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get anybody's.
So the first question that you asked was, was around call, call volume. So for the last three years, including this year, we're seeing about twenty, twenty-two calls a day. Thing to understand about calls is, is that it can be an hour. It can be an hour, it can be two days. You never know what the total is, how long we're gonna be there.
Is there an average?
Most of the calls are two to four hours. Um, even a simple medical lady, the members may only be there an hour. By the time we go help the ambulance, we'll have a patient taken to the, you know, we get back to the fire station. But by the time we do reports, follow up with anything, you know, we've had issues in town where we've done. You know, we've had to contact the state for elder abuse or, you know, different issues. OSHA coming out the other day. The fire part of that scene, probably done in fifteen minutes. We had the tear spread, guy was fine, we were on scene another four hours. And then since there, I've sent another probably five hours following up a little work for OSHA. Going back, helping OSHA measure and, you know, going over everything and doing all of that additional stuff. So, you know.
So on an average call, how many people go on?
It's usually six, eight.
Six, eight?
It's usually, depending on time of day. I never get six or eight people in daytime.
Yeah.
Everybody in the fire station is full-time guy, everybody. So when we get a call, basically we're asking them, leave whatever you're doing.
Yeah.
Some people can't do their job. I can't, Sean does, I have another guy that works with me. But I may be working ten or fifteen minutes away, but I make sure that I go. So daytime coverage, we, he went, we went with one person. Did I call the other day? And by NFBA standard, that's a violation of the standard because you're just not supposed to be in a fire truck with less than three people.
So how do you decide how many people should be on a call?
How do I decide? I fill a fire truck up and send as many as I can get. I don't design for a call or what the call is. I did, I decided.
Based on how many show up?
I agree, based on how many show up and to make it a functional engine company. Does the medical aid call, it's only medical aid, you only need two people? No. I may need five and I may call for more. You don't know till you get there, till you can analyze it and size it up, how many people you have. So I don't make that decision at the fire station before we get on the fire truck. I put as many people as I can in service to get there. Once you get there, eyeball it, size it up, then you can make a determination on what you need. But you always come with more than you need, but you don't want to be talking to eight ball, not adding or not.
So when you do that, so for example, one incident from last year, um, which was kind of controversial, is the battery change. How many people do you send out for something like that?
Battery change?
And the smoke detectors, some woman called the fire department.
Oh. You know, and that, that, we didn't send anybody out, we did that on our own time. Nobody was.
Well, it was on Facebook, a lot of pictures were on Facebook.
Yeah, nobody was, yeah, because she wanted to take pictures, she was so grateful. She called the fire station, left us a message. There was some guys in the station after a call who were all done. We went up there on our own time. The only thing we did is we needed fire department equipment because we needed some of that there, but we did it on our own time.
But how do you just make that determination then? How do you know to send out six people to change batteries?
Those guys wanted to go, I could have done it with two or three. She gave us the information, she doesn't need a step by, or you this, and I need that, I need this. I'm not gonna, I'm going to be the liaison and get some public report going. I know it hit the Facebook and it just went crazy for absolutely zero reason. But again, that's a whole bunch of folks making determination and they know nothing about it. But none of that, Sean was there, I was there, a couple of, a couple, three other guys were there. That was a call.
The other thing to understand, that's a public service. Us going out and helping change batteries means that we didn't have a two a.m. call. With their fire alarm system going off. And everybody racing to the sta, to the station, actually doing it. That, we did two or three calls a month for, you know, faulty detectors. It's much safer for us to do it after a call, much better for the town. And they have less racing there because this whole detector's going off. Because that point, we don't know if it's going off because it's a faulty detector. Or because there's something, there's a carbon dioxide in the air, there's some smoke in the air, whatever. It's much safer for us to do that during the day. Than to come back at night. So from a town standpoint, it's almost better. Than we did it then, than we had those detectors going off and involved in that.
Well, I think the problem is the precedent that sets as well. Like where do you say no? Do we have hundreds of people calling to change batteries? Like, so that's a whole other discussion. But that's the concern, if there's a precedent there. And my point in saying it was, you know, like, I feel like that we have to make some judgment on the situation. Like how many people do you need to keep there for three or four or five hours at a time?
And you don't think I do that?
I don't know.
Cause I do.
Okay.
I definitely do. I don't leave them sitting around the fire station. All is done, they go home. The ones that stay and do it are the officers and the people that need to make sure that all the reports and stuff are taken care of. Because half our reports involve another agency or goes into legal issues or whatnot. So all that has to be done by the officer that's in charge. And that usually check by myself or Sean before it's clear. And then we go to the next.
So Mark, if you have, only have two or three people, do you have access to other police departments?
I mean, I'm. To be sure that our mutually existent, we live by that. Every fire department does, especially that's why, we are so understaffed. And I never know who's coming. Big difference between us and most fire departments, you understand we're, we're a hall fighting department. So everybody's gotta give up what they're doing and show up.
Right, I agree.
The big advantage to every other fire department in the area, I do mean everyone except us. They know, they already have people there. They know what's happening, I don't know. With our new system in here with the I am responding, I at least have guys now that all have that software. So they can put in if they're responding. It's okay, I know I got one guy, two guys, he's a driver, that's good, I got an engine company. And it'll also give you an idea of where they've arrived. But we're still not meeting the standard of which we need to meet, the fire truck on the road at the right time. And we're doing the best we can. As soon as I get three guys, we take off in the truck. There's been times when he went by himself. I've gone by myself. Somebody's gotta get there and start taking control. Make some decisions. But I'll show up with the three that I want, but seven out of ten times, I need board those three. So another truck comes or a backup piece of equipment comes. Cause the other thing that we're finding an awful lot that we're doing lately is the fact that the police department has been so understaffed. You understand that they're running a process, we're doing half their job. If it comes to a traffic, a traffic accident, we're helping with measurements, we're doing lighting, we're doing traffic control. That's all stuff that falls on the dirty ground, but they don't have people to do it. So we're taking one after another off the line, so they can perform with it.
So.
The night that a woman got killed by, they got thrown over here by a scum of a park. Oh, eight hours involved into that, but nine little things. The police left the scene, we controlled that scene for quite a while, still the M V and whatnot, that's huge for you there. Cause they didn't have enough staff. So that fellow where the fire department is. It's not a fire department anymore, okay, we're done, I'm gonna wrap it up, no. No, you don't have to stay there as long as you need to solve the problem, make sure everything's under control.
So my question is, when there's such an issue with, with the liability of staff, does it make sense to start considering partial re, re-utilization? You know, to supplement the fire department?
That's been done numerous, numerous times by a lot bigger fire departments than us. And it never gets off their mind. It becomes.
Have we done any research?
Yes, there has been, there has been a lot of recent studies to try to do regionalization.
Can you provide things?
Try city, I can find you something that hasn't happened in a few years. They've tried that a whole bunch of times. But even the regionalization thing, the biggest problem with it is, in a town like this, if we want to regional, everybody'd be helping us on every single time.
But we're surrounded by cities with a lot more privilege than we have.
Right, right, but those taxpayers are on midnight. Time and time and time again. Those taxpayers ain't gonna do that very long, like I said.
Oh, there will be a cost.
There would be a big cost.
Okay, cost, but we don't really have the data on that, that's a whole other subject.
Oh, that's a whole bigger subject.
Okay.
Bang you get for your fire department right now is, is unbelievable. What you guys get for what we provide.
Dover, Paymore, Dover, Long Term, then you probably need three times what you get.
That means probably more than that.
I mean, that's for the data.
You want data, average fire for that?
They have people we have before and, and probably three or five years old, what we have, gone now and after.
So, I gotta, I gotta go back to still for a question. You know, someone's, maybe I'm missing somebody, when someone's fire alarm goes off because of a faulty battery. Someone calls the fire department and they're like, oh.
Well, yeah, they can. Or they will call dispatch, and dispatch sends us out. They may not know, they don't call the fire department because if it's two in the morning, they're gonna get answering issue. There's nobody there. There's never anybody there that they.
Don't you go through Dover dispatch though?
Exactly.
Don't go through Dover dispatch?
So they dispatch us, because just like I said, they don't know what the fire alarms went off, they don't know that it's faulty, they don't know it's a bad battery. They, all they know is middle of the night, it's two a.m. and there's some smoke detectors going off.
Yeah.
So they're doing the right thing, they're getting out, it was only called us.
Well, I can understand, again, I'm not trying to nitpick, but I can understand if there's some kind of different sensor, like a CO2 sensor. And it goes off and you can't tell. But if all you got is a smoke detector and it goes off in the middle of the night. And you're gonna get up and walk around your house. If there's no smoke and someone calls the fire department because of that. I honestly believe a person that, that calls the fire department should be billed because that's like a waste of services and my. I mean, I, my fire alarm went off last week, faulty battery. Get up in the middle of the night. There's nothing else going on, there's no smoke, there's a very obvious reason why a fire alarm's.
Spider.
I'm sure the hell didn't think about calling, I didn't, I never once thought about calling fire.
You could actually do that too. We, we had one this weekend, it was in a smoke that the tenants could get to. Then or didn't answer, they don't know.
Okay, okay, I can see that.
They don't, they don't.
So you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A lot of folks aren't because they just don't know how it works. Or what it needs, and dispatch is gonna ask, sorry, smoke, it's a fire, it's, are you this? You get all that information. And then when they dispatch us, they're gonna say, person said they're out of the house, there's no smoke, there's no fire. So it gives us a different idea, oh, we're gonna do it. But that's how we get started.
And I, and I got it, I mean, if you're gonna follow you, you gotta go, but I'm just like, I'm a little shocked. I think the point you made is, is that they should be billed.
That happens, there, there is fire departments in this country that will do that stuff, that will bill for services.
I mean, it's the battery, that's.
They call us.
Okay. Okay, I got it.
It's all the time. Oh, I got like cats.
Hey, we're on slide one, let's keep going.
My, hot time. All right, so.
You're right, I'm quicker than that.
Yeah, next part, point system, right? Why do we do the point system? Because we can't guarantee how many hours we're gonna have in any given quarter for pay. So if we were to say, hey, let's pay everybody ten dollars an hour? That's great, but we're gonna blow the budget out some quarters, we may just pre-debt others. It's, so the way that we do it to stay within the guidelines with the labor board and all of that is the point system.
And this is the fairest way for the employees to be compensated.
Basically what happens is.
Because it's not predictable.
Right, it's unpredictable, so whatever the allocated budget is, say it's gonna be thousand dollars for the year. We take that, we divide it by four. At the end of each quarter, we take all of the points that members made, how do they make points? Come to incidents, Monday night trainings, they come for.
Details.
Details, public education, special events, you know, five events we're not covering town. All of those things all go in, each member's get points. The end, we divide that number, right, the, the quarterly number by a total number of points. And it comes up with a dollar amount. We then go back and each member has earned a certain number of points, paid that dollar amount, multiplied by the points. That's what they get paid for before. Paid out on a quarterly basis, um, the next thing.
Is that confusing?
No, I'm an engineer.
I'm just saying that, but we've gone down this road a dozen times.
Well, we've never, ever.
No, no, no.
We've never seen anything on paper.
We can make this very easy, just pay us fifteen bucks an hour like all his guys are getting and we're all set.
Um, it's easier to see it on paper than it is to say it's a point system. So this is why I asked for this, which I've been asking for for years.
Points equal hours, basically how it works out. But we use the word points because it's not all based on one thing.
It's all based on a call.
It's based on calls, it's based on training.
It's four or five of them.
Yes, exactly. And they're getting, and our point per hour. So as they're there, as Sean just explained, we have call sheets, which we do, and I'm sure we have those. We have, we have time cards for guys that come in and have to, you know, drive a truck to Scarborough and wait for it to be repaired, bring it back in five hours. So we have different ways that we put all that stuff together. When we get done in each quarter, as you said, it all gets totaled up. And our quarterly pays a fourteen grand a quarter or something like that. And the points are divided into that, it comes out with a hourly rate.
What's D C and A C?
Assistant chief, deputy chief. So.
They earn more, they earn more point out in the beginning. Yeah, N C, D C. See, I was in this system, and I think you asked this the last time, when we were doing the E S C R, Jim, that. I came out of the system, I was in for a while. And I think a couple of meetings ago, you said, oh, you got this, no, I came out of that system. And got my pay bumped up to fifteen, which I made now. So when we do that, these guys all have those points, it's because they all have additional responsibilities. If I'm not there, Sean's the guy to say, right, go. And it goes right down the line. So they get a little bit more because of the extra responsibility they have. It's not so much just on call volume, it's things that they have to do on the station. Because none of us have enough time, there's nobody's there at all during the daytime. Do all the other things, required paperwork, certifications, we gotta do everything that were required. So these guys earn a little bit more on that end because of the time, the responsibility, the jobs they're assigned.
So, so one of the things we kept asking today is, you know, do you have job descriptions? Do you have that? We actually have a literal two-inch line here with all of this. So this is, you know, department-directed personnel for responsible performance. We have probationary members, we have description of each level of, you know, what a firefighter is, what probationary, what a blue chief is. Lieutenant, captain, all of that is all scrubbed out. Fire training for each of those, experience, all of that. As part of that, the testing. So for us, when a member goes from being firefighter to blue chief. We actually put them through a little bit test, a job test, where we'll take them out in some scenario. Practically, practically exam. And then depending on what level, like when I moved up to D C. I actually had career in the chiefs come in and interview me in an oral board situation. And then finally came to a select board. So all of those things are all built into this, these personnel department directives that we have. That when you guys come down to the station, you can take it off and, and get, see all of these.
So you don't have an electronic form?
We do.
Could you share with us?
So, it's okay. And so, so just a quick, quick question on the reason.
You want the whole book?
Um, if it's in electronic form, it's nothing to send it.
About that thing?
That's fine.
So just a quick.
There's a lot of things in there that really don't pertain to anything that you really have a want.
That's fine, that's what searches are. Whatever search, I can search for whatever.
Say, here, a bit of it then.
So. So the, the four thousand dollar raise for.
For firefighters.
For firefighters. Is that, I mean, I just was talking about this, so is the point? The point is three dollars, is go for a three dollars point, that's, is that hours?
It would not, so, so if you look at that, if you, um, flip over that piece of paper that's right in front of you there. Um, the, the white one, the small piece of paper.
Right in front of you.
Yeah.
That's what we, the thing is, you've been around a little bit, like, well, I've been trying for years, just to try to get fired.
How does, minimum wage?
Minimum wage.
Would that bring them to?
Uh-uh. Uh-uh, not even close.
But minimum wage, then, I mean, if you use a formula to apply it, it really depends on how many hours they work. Cause they could have lower points and divi, divided into your quarterly salary, it could make them twenty dollars an hour, right?
No.
No, no, no.
So, so that, that's why I mentioned that piece of paper.
Those are. Those are.
So that's our hourly wage, point wage.
Twenty ninety each quarter.
You only get one.
That's what the, that's what the hourly rate.
But if they work less hours, then you don't.
It's, it's still, they get one point for one hour, so they still get, you know, so the last one was actually our highest paid month or paid quarter that we had, just under ten dollars. The quarter before that was six dollars and forty cents, so a point. So if a member only comes in for three hours, then they take two months.
And just pay for the quarter.
What you said, it was the quarterly allocation, right, divided by the number of points that were accumulated for, right?
By everyone.
Right, exactly. So I'm saying, if you have, if you don't have a lot of calls a quarter, then you have fourteen thousand dollars to spread out over fewer points.
Yeah, it, and we have data going back, that's three years worth of data, and we have even ten years further back than that, all things that have been given out. We've never, you know, like I said, last quarter was the highest we've ever had. Most of the time, the average is about seventy-five, seven fifty, that, that we end up in any given year or two.
So I'm just saying that I can see if you have fourteen thousand dollars, for example, to spend, and your calls are down, say you only have twenty calls on that quarter. You have all of this money that's available, so why not just have more department activities?
Yeah, we do.
Great, that's a point. So you find a way to, to make that dollar amount, seven dollars and fifteen cents, where, what if you don't have to have all those unnecessary activities? Not that they're all unnecessary.
Every activity that we do that I determine somebody to be paid for is a fire department function, something that must be done. There's no extreme stuff that we do.
We don't.
We do so much, we do so much above, beyond, that does not even go to the point system easily. Now, I spend three or four hours a day doing fire department stuff, and the other things that have been filed on me, Sean does that, and if not more.
Right. I, I'm working for probably two dollars an hour.
Yeah, you mean all of putting this together for you guys, putting all of those.
Yeah, well, I'd say for two dollars an hour, come on, do my job. See how you like that. I mean, I don't, I probably make five bucks an hour, but I'm responsible for people's lives.
If public service, then, like, my point is, it's public service and we can't make a living on it.
I know it's public service, and it's the same thing you're sitting there. You're doing it because you want and you have the need to be there, wanting. It's the same thing with me over here. I'm not doing this to break the bank, because it ain't gonna happen. I get that. I've been here for an awful long time, I'm damn good at what I do, and I'll say it.
Can I keep this?
Do I make a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can give you a copy of that.
Yeah, but you, I'd send it to me, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Send it to us.
I just scrolled that down.
But, and, and what you're saying, there may be a time in the afternoon when we get three people that comes in for a call. That's the only call for the day before she did it. Yeah, maybe that one call, they make twenty bucks an hour. But by the time you average it all up over quarter, from all the other points that are earned, that just gets brought down, and down, and down, and down. You're asking this forever, and there's your information right there on where we are.
So just so I have this formula correct, Sean, it's quarterly allocation of the entire lineup, divided by the number of points in that quarter.
Yep.
And from that, you arrive at the dollar amount that's given. That isn't complicated at all.
And like you said, we, we did this last year with a select board, and I know there's a lot of new faces, but we, we've gone over this. We tried to make it so that it made sense, because if we go to a straight hourly rate, then anytime you call people, you have a pay minimums.
And, and I've got a printout like this every quarter, and I hand it into Chuck, and he takes care of the payroll. There's everybody's name, and there's a column on how many points they earned.
Do you keep track of the types of calls as well?
Yeah, they are right there.
Oh, can I see that?
That's the call. That's the fire department, I've got a little.
So, can you literally share this call figures? So we actually have this thing of an accounting board for this?
This is last, that's last year's call volume, eight, one hundred eighty-seven.
Do you also track how many people are in these calls?
Yep, they have, we have a sign-in sheet, and on every call, they sign their names, so I know who's who.
So you could provide us with call, the number of people in the call.
Yep.
And the total incidents.
Yep, anything you want.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's all ready to go.
I know.
Might be easier to come down to the fire station, look at it, you can understand it that way.
Uh, no, I actually, I'd like to be able to review this information at eleven o'clock at night or very fucking late.
Really?
I do.
Is that over coffee?
Could be a glass of wine. Um, so.
So, one other thing, could we, could we get a list of the other categories that you, you add in there, like you said, you know, training, sales, and training?
So there's a, another piece of paper there that's time cards, that's all the time cards from this year?
Time cards.
And you'll actually see that.
Right there, I had an awful lot of what we assign points for, that individuals earn. Some family day, vehicle maintenance is another one, special detail, administrative stuff, because somebody's gonna come back and do it with a lawyer, all those different things. And that is determined by you. I decide if these guys are on the clock.
But like, we've got all of our vehicles inspected.
But you have like a normal set of these that you use, basically, and then you add things in, right? But there's probably almost eight things that you do on a regular basis.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, training, inspections.
Right.
Those are probably the biggest thing, you know, outside of incidents. Incidents are ninety percent of the events. Monday nights is our standing, you know, meeting, that's where the guys get trucks along the road, inspect vehicles, and then all of that is required by an FDA, and by an insurance company. We have to drive the vehicles to serve them all every week.
Now, how many firefighters you have?
Twenty-four. Out of that twenty-four, I probably have six or eight that I have to, I have guys that let me think of ten calls. If they are certified, they do.
Certified.
I can use all of them.
So you, do you certify them at their place, like, like they have to do a state every year? Is that an annual certification?
One, one-time thing, become a certified firefighter, firefighter one, firefighter two. I should achieve that here. I mean, go back and get a lot of remedial training, and there's other certifications you should achieve. But a guy in Rollinsburg that's a level-two firefighter, he's got the exact same amount of training as the guy in Dover, some of them are Boston, LA, St. Louis, it's the same stuff. There's no difference, no difference. Just because we're a tall fire department does not mean that we're any less than the guys who are in the house. I'd take some of my guys, go to, get some of these big fire departments and go do their job. The other thing is, I'll come when you come down, Jack, we'll show you some stuff. I have a list on my desk of people that have gone through the fire. I've been, I've been in the fire station for thirty-four years. I've been in the fire service for forty-two years. I have a list on my desk of ninety-two people that have been certified.
So you asked for the chief's authority as well?
We're stepping.
So you'd say that we're already talking.
I know, Spencer.
Three spot ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Spencer.
EMD.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At, or at least once a song.
That's true.
Always. So, you know, like I said, the amount of people who are now required to do for an FDA, ISO, DOT, all of those things, maybe increases at one.
What's EMD?
Emergency Management Director. That used to be Chief Dusha, I'm sure.
How many hours do you spend, um, on average a week for those two things?
Uh, the EMD stuff, it, it varies. When we had the hurricane height that was coming up here, I probably spent three hours a day. Because I had to sign, the state awkward opens their emergency operations center. All the emergency management directors have to sign in and log in, so they know they're there. So you're getting updates on weather, what the state can provide, uh, the latest information. So when that was happening, I was probably spending two, three, four hours a day, listening to a lot of this stuff and getting the information. There may be two weeks where I don't have to do anything, but monthly, uh, I have to go in and log in, go through remedial training, do that, so it varies on what it is. Hopefully, I never use it, to tell you the truth.
So you have like a baseline number of hours that you spend each month on those?
Yeah, I guess you wanna call it baseline, but like I said, there's nothing that's passive, still. Baseline, yes, because I have to go in and make sure that they know that I'm still here. And they also added the, uh, and when that was done, that was this summer they did it, June or July, after Bob left, and, and they added.
They shifted it to you?
They shifted it to me.
You signed up for it?
No, who says I signed up?
You did. Definitely answered in the background.
Signed up? What do you mean I signed up?
He wanted more, he wanted more.
Well, you know, the thing, the thing is, EMD, Emergency Management Director, whenever there's a big emergency in anybody's town, who has ultimate responsibility to run that scene and mitigate the situation?
Please, a fire. One or two.
If you, you will get the accident.
Statewide, it's fire.
It's me. It's, it's, it's in the RSA, that's state made, the highest ranking fire official on the scene is controlling that scene. That falls under the EMD, but it also falls under my job as fire chief, falls on my head.
How about your ambulance, like, I know the contract, um, was a back and forth for a while, but other than that, is there a normal communication with your, how often you do it?
We, if it's not, we get shown. We go to a lot of calls with them, they wanna come over, train, I want you guys to be knowledgeable, and you guys just put in service. So there's a lot of things, I go, well, we weren't constantly. And the reason why that was added, I put that on there, was part of the reason why I should increase is the fact that we never had the, nobody ever minded the contract at all. Tom wrote the check and off it on. With this increase, when you read the, uh, new contract, there's four or five things that we added that gave us a little bit more control over what they're doing. There was a time when they would come over, they gotta have two license EMTs, sometimes they would come over without that, there's some things that they needed to make, uh, certain stipulations. So those were written in, and it's kind of fallen on the media to watch and, and take care of all those issues. Whether it be call volume, or, uh, training issues, or whatever. So somebody just kind of checks and balances on that contract, making sure they're living up to the things that were in the contract.
Um, so.
I think I have three more things, right? So emergency equipment testing was the, the third thing you guys asked about. Um, this is again, it's not anything that we need to control, an FDA, DOT, uh, ISO, I'll say. Your, your pump tests have to be done yearly, ISO comes in the knowledge, if we don't have them, then the insurance rate goes up for the town. DOT, every air pack that we carry has a DOT exception on, uh, exemption on it. If those bottles aren't tested every five years, we're out of compliance, it's.
So then we just get these air packs to see.
It's every five years, so we get the air packs in twenty-fifty and we just have them micro-tested on.
Oh, it's twenty, twenty, I thought it was all those.
Twenty, twenty.
Sort of good, good.
So, so this is that piece, but the, the actual packs themselves have to be air-floated every year. The new filling station that we just got, once a quarter, they have to come out and sample the air, and that it's making, and make sure that it doesn't have any carbon dioxide. And then we have to post two great big things in the fire station to show our compliance, so that's why the increase of that line item.
Right.
So, uh, vehicle fuel was the next one, highly unpredictable. It, it, it depends on call volume, the price of fuel. We actually look at, we'll go to the state garage, we'll go to Irving, we're gonna come to a truck, we'll buy it, or it's the cheapest.
Bring it by?
We cannot. So we do use right express, express cars, it's supposed to give us further discounts, that's controlled by the, the town. Um, you'll notice that our budget, this, this was one of the areas the select board got last year, to try to beat that production.
Yeah, but you reduced it further this year.
I, I think it was just a fifty-dollar.
Right.
Uh, production. It, it probably, we were at a hundred and two percent of the budget last year, so it probably should go back up to where it was.
I think Jack was concerned that you were reducing the fuel.
It, it probably should go up, that it was something that I didn't realize, the select board had changed it after we submitted budget last year. So I, I just carried that line.
We take control, I mean, we may just have to go to a call, take five miles to drive to it, but we may have to truck run, because it's fifteen hours, doing pumping operations or something.
So the last thing you asked, you asked a bunch of questions around, set around the vehicle exhaust system, um, so I actually done a lot of work around this. I, I think probably everybody understands, it's only because of, of after firefighters now. Um, what we're putting in for, into our bodies, through all of these carcinogens in the station is just as bad. So if you look, this is actually the, the Rollinsburg station out here, it doesn't show up as well up here. But the ceiling has great big black marks on it from all of the exhaust.
Right.
And that's all of our gear sitting right there. So every time we start a vehicle, our gear just getting covered with all of these exhaust particulates.
But didn't you have a solution, like, isn't there like a hose that you use now?
So we can, that's what's in CIP. We don't have one now, there's nothing in the station, that's what's in CIP for twenty-twenty-two.
So you've never had anything to exhaust out of there?
No. So the, the good news is that five years ago, we got quotes, they were incredibly expensive, in the seventy-five thousand dollar range. I went and got updated quotes, and it's come down significantly, we can probably do this for a closer to forty thousand dollars.
Usually you do.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I know I've asked this question before, so what, do you guys, I've done a question with you guys, I know this is, it's just out, but do you like, the first thing you gotta do is open the door and then start the drink?
So we open the door on the way to the vehicle, as soon as the vehicle started?
We get it out of the ramp, tell the guys you're finished, you're ready to go, and then, so, it still fills, it lets up.
I, I agree, I, I mean, if this was thirty years ago, I would, yeah, right, but it's not.
Well, yeah, medical things are changing. And just over this past weekend, they added a guy, Memorial, the firefighter Memorial Pumper, he used to, he's a chief in Newton. He died two years ago, was the first abstained, he ate, uh, on-the-job death caused by cancer. And he typed a lot of it in his vehicle exhaust system, he was a chief in Newton.
Jack or Ken, you guys, I mean.
It's something that's getting very, very tense, he looked at the cancerous.
Well, I, I'm happy to hear that you might have a price on it.
Sure.
Um, that's all, I mean, I think we don't have any such support now. I thought there would be, there would be all this one, but we have, um, a method of venting.
I think so.
Yeah, no, it's only those two systems. The one that's like a, it hangs your ceiling, it vacuums it out, and the other one is, you said, here, there's a hose which attaches to the exhaust.
And so that's what you're proposing, the hose system?
So this system down here is that back system. So what happens is, is every time you open a door, start a vehicle, that kicks on. It actually has great big filters.
And they get it vacuumed, sucks everything out?
Sucks everything out into a filter zone. This system's about six thousand dollars cheaper than that system. The other, you see with the hose system on that top, the corners, is the different parts. And what happens is, is the boot doesn't get put on exactly right, and you end up driving out, and you drag, crank the hose.
So are you, how is it with that?
This is what is, this is a cheaper solution, and have to repeat the needs of.
It's the obvious thing, that's what we can use that.
So that's just the system.
Talk to all the fire departments that use that.
So Dover has this system.
That bowl over where I came from, the bowl system.
Yep. This is much more prevalent, the, the yellow hose system is much more prevalent, um, you know, basically.
That's the core.
South Florida, North Florida, it's called climbing. And so the, the hoses hang down, and they sit on the track, and as the fire truck pulls out, goes all the way to the end of the garage door, and releases.
You know, the other caveat to this whole thing is the fact that, uh, I bet you need to get the fire station more as, use it for a shelter if we get an incident in town. Because otherwise, it's here. And this just does not have the facility to house up any posts. That does, because it's got kitchens, it's got bathrooms, it's got more space. And if we had an incident, whether it be a big ice storm like we had fifteen years ago, and there was no power for like that, we'd be there, we were all out. Or whether it be a train falls off the track, and some chemical contaminants, whatever it is, flood, or we need to open an emergency shelter, it's the fire station. Now, where's the fire station? And we've got thirty people housed in it, for whatever reason, and then we're running fire trucks up on a busy day with a lot of calls, and while they're there, they're getting exposed to this, high, high, high. Well, just the fire guys, I don't understand it. It could be this is a shelter for people that we have to take care of housing. So now we're exposing citizens to some location, but I think it's supposed to.
Well, you don't have equipment if you're on there and there. So you wouldn't be able to have equipment and people in there, so.
Sure, I could. You gotta put the fire truck someplace, it could still be, or it's still gonna park in there. There's three rooms out the back where we could put individuals in, we could do the housing. We have the training room, we have the meeting.
I don't see that as a good solution, a shelter with all the equipment in it. But anyways, that's a whole different.
The kids would enjoy it.
It's, it's not a long-term shelter, it, it's a short-term, break people here until they can open the shelter somewhere, so it's an actual shelter.
Shelter, something else, I agree, we're the same.
But it doesn't.
We don't have many options in this community to do that.
You're delusional. Um, so, is that installed? The, the numbers that you're using, is that installed, systems, or is that just a?
So that is installed. The one, the module that one for forty-seven dollar, um, is everything but the electrical work. The, um, air vac system, which is the, the bottom one here, um, is forty thousand, six hundred and some odd dollars, and that's everything electrical included. So if you guys were to say, you know, climbing that, that's what's more prevalent, that's what we wanna do, I would say, budget fifty thousand. If you're good with the, the yellow one, you know, that forty-one, it's probably a good number of things.
I think you'd wanna take a tour. Plan to take you to a fire station, you know, neighboring community, has a system.
What was the first one, thirty thousand? That's, it's called climbing that, that.
Okay, so fifty, fifty or forty-one, got it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about.
No, the, the two systems, you know, and again, try to do the research and.
Yeah, yeah, I think if you do, it's a set, all right?
Sets of a set, right?
Yeah, this is the one, set, I have, you guys had some questions.
So, I appreciate you guys giving us all this information tonight, and I appreciate you having us. Um, so, I appreciate you guys giving us all this information tonight, and I understand you can make this market, but I don't think I can feel ready to make decisions about all of this, then.
We don't have?
No, we don't, because there was, it's not, we, we propose.
We have a week.
I totally agree, yeah.
I don't know, I haven't heard anything, but you can do it.
No, I think it's tomorrow. I have, uh-
No, they're not tomorrow, it'll be a Wednesday night.
For Wednesday, I have transfer highway, and I'm not sure.
Well, it was supposed to be sip highway and transfer, but they're not gonna do tran, well, they can do transfer, it's just Ed.
Yeah, we can do that.
But we don't have to have this budget ready for that.
Right.
I mean, we, we can think for this, and then, we'll just come back again.
Yeah.
They don't give me a chance to visit.
All right, good, thank you, Sean. Can you send us all the information that you-
He's definitely right.
I think, I think we're all just trying to-
So, one last thing we need to do, um, before-
My goal, what am I trying to print? I'm trying to, I'm looking at that map.
It's a material.
I hear, you know, they always have that.
I wouldn't be too smart, because, oh, anyway. We can make extra decisions.
I'm fine with that.
They want them now, or, you know?
All right, I'm fine with everything, we can pretty much end the meeting, I said, for, so what is your tomorrow? I'll just go bring this up real quick, because I have this letter presented to me. Um, and it's, it's actually, it's the board, have you guys seen this one?
Which one?
So it's about someone that has a billable law firm, and they're looking for us to, what, it has to go through the, uh, the mission.
I think that would be on the-
Planning, okay.
I don't, I saw that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to do anything this morning.
Right. We agreed, and I sent emails to Ryan that we were planning for the next round of support.
I just don't wanna be the sky hanging, I gotta go.
Should we send him a note back? You know what? I don't, I mean, just, so they, you recognize that we got it, we're responding to it?
Um.
I don't know, I, I- I'll give him a quick call, he's done with, and I, I got his name.
Just tell him it's on the agenda, we'll, we'll get to it.
So, before we end, the, the two things I got to do, um, just get ahold of Chuck, so we can talk about the warrant articles being paid, that's my duty. And, and I'll give this gentleman a call, just to say that we're-
The other thing when you talk to Chuck is about coverage, coverage, whatever needs to cover, thank you, so I got a check.
Well, I already got an email, and he emailed all of us, and we need to-
Right, I'm just gonna do, I'm gonna tell him that when I talk to him, I'll, you're gonna step up the welfare.
These are the proposals for the, um, climb event and the airbag system. Um, he gave one accidental copy, but you need two of this instead of one of each, one for the hose system, one for the air system.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll have to make a copy of the airbag one.
We'll move it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Right, if you want.
But if you, if there's one of these, I can, so we get that call.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, it's tomorrow. Can we be the other one tomorrow, I can call it.
We can have Chuck, um, make a copy of that second one. I can just ask you to make, this one, do you, do you, uh, this one?
Yellow one.
One of these. Um, so, so do we wanna wait until tomorrow to do the board appointments, um, executive board appointments?
I just wanna do it right now, it's in pretty, or, I don't, I mean, there's no problem.
I think it needs discussion.
Yeah.
Huh?
I think it needs a little discussion.
It's not a problem, I mean, it's, so what do we have on the agenda for tomorrow?
So tomorrow night, um, is recreation budget is coming in. Um, and, yeah, so Celia's gonna come back in, because her budget is very ambiguous. It doesn't line up with the presentation that she gave. So I asked her, I gave her what we had for the budget, that Carolyn put in, and asked her to try to resolve her budget to this.
Yeah, she's, she kinda left it down by herself. Is she doing that herself? Well, it's, I mean, it's not really, it was, but I don't know what it is. There's a few people, but it's a very small group, two or three.
Um, so, we need to try to help her.
It's that.
All right, so who else is coming besides Rick, come on?
Um, so what we have opened-
Is police coming?
Um, John's budget was clear.
Oh, sad, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think it was clear, um, because his budget was flat.
Yeah.
Um, and so we had recreation, um, we need to ma- maybe, or maybe not, resolve fire. Um, and then there was-
Appointment, the appointment's quick, so we've only only given a little more.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be very long, because we really have rec, and, um, town clerk was another one.
Yeah.
One second, give me thirty seconds, oh, executive office. So we have executive office, um, I have some concerns about what we have budgeting for the town administrator. Um, and so that needs discussion, so we have executive office, and we have town clerk and recreation.
What's executive what?
And tax clerk, for that matter. There's no, no proposing, this is a tax clerk.